Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call back into open session this meeting of the Arlington AISD Board of Trustees for December 13th at 7:00 PM. Thank you everybody for coming out tonight. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony and we'll have a joint pledge tonight. I'd like Mr. Harvey and Mr. Walker to lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, gentlemen. We're gonna pick on you all night because you're leaving us. Oh, they're retiring. Yes, they're not, you know, it's a good thing. Next up, we have the Beckham Elementary Third Grade Choir under the direction of Judy Hart. Ms. Hart has been a music teacher at Beckham for 12 years. The Beckham Third Graders have just finished their annual holiday variety show for their parents on December 6th. They will perform a small sample tonight. Hi, guys. They're performing "Jammin' in Our Jammys." Uh-huh. And "Rock Around the Jingle Bells." Ms. Hart, whenever you're ready.
(music playing) 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 (music playing)
Wow, thank you very much. And that was the Beckham Elementary School Third Grade Choir under the direction of Judy Hart. Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Thank you.
Thanks, kiddos. (applause) All right, who wants to go out after the kids? Amy, Amy Casas.
Unfortunately, I cannot sing or dance as good as those kids, so... President Barron, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, I would like to take a moment before we introduce this year's National Merit semifinalists, National Achievement semifinalists, and National Hispanic Scholars to say a few words about these outstanding programs. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships available to those students who take the PSAT and meet published requirements. Of the 1.5 million entrants, approximately 16,000 students are identified as semifinalists. And this year, the AISD is home to eight of these outstanding students. The National Achievement Scholarship Program provides recognition for outstanding African-American students. Of the more than 160,000 students who enter the program, approximately 1,600 are designated as semifinalists. And this year, the AISD is proud to have two honorees. The National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies outstanding Hispanic high school students and shares information about these academically well-prepared students with subscribing colleges and universities. Each year, nearly 5,000 outstanding Hispanic scholars are honored, and this year, the AISD is home to six of these honorees. This evening, these students will be our first inductees of the year into the 2012-2013 Wall of Fame. At this time, I would like to invite our high school principals to come up one by one to introduce their students. Students, if you and your parents would come forward when your name is called and line up, once all of our students have been introduced, we will ask you to introduce your parents, if they are here, and tell us where you plan to attend college. We will begin with Principal Jennifer Young from Arlington High School.
It is my honor and privilege to introduce to you four outstanding Arlington High students. Just a word about these four students, they not only excel in the classroom, they also excel in our extracurriculars, and they excel in leadership, and they are outstanding representatives of not just Arlington High School, but of our entire school district. I would like to start with our National Merit semifinalist, Mr. Hunter Juergens. We have two National Hispanic Scholars. First is Christian Lopez. And our second Hispanic scholar is Ms. Ally Diaz. At this time, I would also like to recognize a few of our counselors who work with these students. Tonight, here at the meeting, we have Beth Hancock. We also have Susan Hunt and Suzie Hargrove. Oh, there she is. And so, thank you to our, thank you to our counselors for not only working with these outstanding students, but all the students of Arlington High School.
Hi, once again, my name is Hunter Juergens. This is my mother, Stephanie Juergens, and my father, Alan Juergens. And for my college plans, this next fall, I plan to attend either Southwestern University or Rice University, where I will pursue a major in astrophysics.
Hello, my name is Carter Wilkerson. This is my father, Carl Wilkerson, and my mother, Denise Wilkerson. I wish to attend the United States Naval Academy and major in aerospace engineering.
I'm Christian Lopez. This is my father, Paul Lopez, and my mother, Lisa Lopez. I plan on attending the University of Texas at Austin and majoring in mechanical engineering.
I'm Ally Diaz, and this is my mother, Marty Diaz, and my father, Fred Diaz, is out of town on a business trip, so he would be here if he could. And for college, I am undecided on schools yet, but I've sent all my applications and I promise I'm going. And I plan to major in communications and be pre-law, too.
All right, thank you, that's Arlington High. Next up, we have Bowie High School with Michelle Wilmouth-Sanado.
Good evening, President Barron, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the Board of Trustees. It's my honor and privilege to introduce two of our outstanding guidance counselors tonight from Bowie High School. That would be Jackie Parsons and Mr. Greg Hope. Jackie and Greg represent a very talented counseling staff. For our 3,000 students, they provide support, resources, a listening ear, advice, patience, and anything else that is needed to help the students of Bowie High School. We couldn't do it without our guidance staff, so I want to, I want to recognize them and thank them and all of our counselors for their efforts. I'm not sure where Mr. Hope is. Tonight, I am introducing Raven Haynes, and Raven is a National Achievement semifinalist, and she's a very active Bowie volunteer. So Raven, if you'll come, and your parents will also join us here. She's involved in National Honor Society, Art Club, and the Bowie High School Journalism Program. In fact, she's the editor-in-chief for the Vols Voice newspaper. This past summer, Reagan was selected as a Dallas Morning News intern, and so she worked all summer for the Dallas Morning News. Very competitive program, and the first from our school to be able to be selected. We're very proud of her. Reagan is a leader in every situation. That's how she's described by her teachers. She has a tremendous work ethic and is always thirsty for knowledge. Even though academics are very important to Raven, it does not keep her from having fun with her fellow students and with her teachers. She wants to be known for positive morals and family values. She is truly one of Bowie High School's finest students, and it's my honor to present her to you tonight.
Hi, I'm Raven Haynes. This is my mom, Stephanie Fowler, and I plan to go to Northwestern, hopefully, fingers crossed, or George Mason University, and I want to major in journalism. Yeah.
All right, next up is Lamar High School with Dr. Larry Harmon.
Hi, good evening, President Barron and members of the school board, Dr. Cavassos. It's my pleasure tonight to talk about Scott Perkins, our National semifinalist scholar. He's not able to be here tonight with his family. I would like to say Scott is an AP Scholar, member of National Honor Society. He's a member of the varsity baseball team and is a highly contributing member to his church and charitable organizations in the North Arlington community. He's a math, science scholar, engineering. He's taken AP Physics and is leading by example with his peers to encourage them also to finish their college studies. I know he had an interest in Texas A&amp;M. I know he has a lot of offers. It's amazing how many major four-year universities offer money to our students, and so he's in the process of deciding. And as far as his major, I know it's going to be something in the area of engineering, math, and science, although if he were here tonight, maybe it'd be third grade choir teacher. You never know. So I wish that Scott and his family were here tonight, and I want to honor him by presenting him and his accolades to you tonight. So thank you to Scott and Mr. and Mrs. Perkins.
Here to present Martin High School students, our assistant principal, Tanya Renfai.
Mr. Barron, Dr. Cavassos, Board of Trustees, thank you for allowing me to stand in Ms. Roddy's stead and to celebrate the academic successes of our students at Martin High School. I kind of feel like I'm in a competition. I can't speak like all of those who've gotten up and spoken great things about their students, but what I can say is that we have quite a few students, if I was to list everything that they're involved in, community-wise, athletics, academics, we could be here for a very long time. So I'm going to let the numbers and them speak for themselves. But I would also like to thank the parents for sharing them with us, for allowing us to celebrate their scholastic achievements, and to very often claim them as our own. I'd also like to acknowledge our wonderful counselors who do a great job daily of encouraging these students to persevere, to continue on in their efforts and their future endeavors, Ms. Dana Bishop, Ms. Deborah Mansory, and Ms. Susan King. Our National Merit semifinalists are Elizabeth Ferrier, Anthony Hahn, Carly Kirk, Kevin Shin, and Benjamin Yang. Our National Hispanic Scholars, Leila Bonakdar. There are quite a few of us, so if we could shift, I'm gonna say that again, there are quite a few of us, so if we could shift. And last but not least, Cameron Villarreal.
This is my dad, Tom Ferrier, and my mom, Sue Ferrier. I'm not really sure where I want to go yet, but I'm looking at the University of Southern California, and I would like to study philosophy.
Hi, I'm Tony Hahn, and behind me are my awesome parents, Ms. Emily Hahn and Dr. Zen Hahn. Recently, I was accepted to and will be attending Washington University in St. Louis, where I will be studying biomedical engineering and pursuing a pre-med track.
Hi, my name is Carly Kirk. This is my mother, Andrea. I'd like to go to the United States Naval Academy and study mechanical engineering.
I'm Kevin Shin. My parents couldn't be here, but my first choice would be Stanford University, and I'd like to study computer science.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Yang, and behind me is my father, Michael. I'm still awaiting my early decision from Stanford University, but currently, I plan on attending the Business Honors Program at UT.
Hi, I'm Leila Bonakdar, and this is my mother, Norma, and I'm planning to attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in chemistry.
My name is Brian Mitchell. This is my mother, Cindy, and I plan on going to Baylor University and majoring in mechanical engineering.
Hi, I'm Alicia Smiley. This is my mom, Christina Smiley, and this is my dad, Jerry, and I plan on going to either TCU or SMU and majoring in possibly mechanical engineering.
Hi, I'm Cameron Villarreal. These are my parents, Juan and Cindy Villarreal. I plan on going to Cambridge. No, I'm only kidding. I plan on either going to Texas A&amp;M, GIGOM, or Tulsa University and studying mechanical engineering.
Our last school this evening is Seguin High School, Mr. Michael Hill.
President Barron, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board, I want to take this opportunity to personally thank each of you for recognizing our students. This means so much to our school and our community. And here to share with the student from Seguin tonight, we do have two counselors, Mr. Tom Land and Mr. Danny Welch, and Assistant Principal Carrie Pride, who works very closely with our students. Thank you, thank you. I'm very proud to introduce Kara Ann Rinty, who is the first National Achievement semifinalist in Seguin High School's history. Kara not only excels academically, but she is also extremely involved in the school community activities. She serves as the officer in the chamber choir and the choral choir. She also plays for our softball team. She, she is a member of the URL Events Team, and she's helping our team compete at the state level this year. She's very involved in our church, and she participates in various ministries there. In her spare time, she enjoys reading and spending time with her family. So this time, Kara, would you please come forward? Kara Ann Rinty.
Behind me is my mom, Andrea Kelly, and my dad, Caesar Rinty, and in the back, back there is a lot of my family, my stepmom, Cynthia, my stepbrother Dennis, my sister Chloe, and my grandmother, Pearlene. I'm planning to either attend Howard University or Stanford in the fall on either foreign language or linguistics. And on behalf of all of us, thank you so much for honoring us. It means a lot.
We want to congratulate our students once again, and we're going to ask all of the students to come back up to the front so we can take a group picture really fast.
So while we bring the kids back up, Mr. Hope, do you have something to say?
Yeah, and Mr. Hill, congratulations. I know your high school basketball team is on national television as we speak on ESPNU. Is they're the number one ranked 4A basketball team in the state of Texas right now.
There goes the future, right there. We will continue. Next item on the agenda is appointments. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Barron. I'd like to recommend the individuals discussed in closed session for the principal of Blanton Elementary School, principal of Webb Elementary School, the assistant principal of Arlington High School, the assistant principal of South Davis Elementary, as discussed in executive session.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Peña, second by Ms. Solins. Please vote.
Too fast.
I'm sorry, vote again. All members present voting in the affirmative. Dr. Rice is at another school event, he'll be with us later on. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. It's my pleasure to present to you the new principal of Blanton Elementary School, Mr. Joshua attended James Madison University, the University of Texas at Arlington, and he's been an assistant principal at HEB ISD in 2009, and assistant principal from '07 to '09, sixth grade teacher and a fourth grade teacher. Josh, congratulations, and anybody you'd like to introduce or anything you'd like to say?
Yes, sir, thank you. I definitely am not six foot eight, so I need to pull the microphone down. Dr. Cavassos, thank you very much. President Barron, thank you, and the board, thank you so much for your appointment. I'm honored by the opportunity to lead Blanton Elementary. Thank you. This is an exciting moment, and I brought a crew with me to introduce to you all. So if you'll give me a moment, I want to brag on my family. So I have first my beautiful bride, Carrie, and then I have four children. I am not a bored man. I'm tired man. I have my 10-year-old son, Caleb, wave. I have my eight-year-old son, Timmy. I have my two-year-old daughter, that's my princess, and I have my four-month-old son, Aaron. So, and I also brought with me my father, Ernie, one of my dear friends, Debbie, and my father-in-law, Bob, and another dear friend, Gail. So family is very important to me, and I look forward to leading Blanton as my family. Thank you.
Next, it's my pleasure to present to you the new principal of Webb Elementary School, Ms. Raquel Leiker. Raquel attended Sam Houston State University, Texas A&amp;M University in College Station, where she received her masters, and Charlton State University, she received another masters. She's been an assistant principal at John's Elementary School, been a first, second, and fourth grade teacher. She's been a district bilingual facilitator and a bilingual teacher at Southwest Elementary as well. Raquel, congratulations, and you'd like to introduce anyone or have anything to say? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Cavassos, President Barron, and school board members, I want to say thank you, thank you for this opportunity to continue my career and lead Webb in a direction that's going to be positive and is going to meet the needs of our strategic plan. I want to say thank you to my family and those that are watching and those that are here, my husband, Tim, my son, Evan, and my youngest daughter, Kaylee. I also would like to thank my John's family. Mrs. Rogers, my principal. Mr. Fowler, my teammate, excuse me. My John's faculty and staff for all the memories that we shared over the years, such as taking the earthworms, fishing, cupcakes. Cupcakes that mysteriously became disappearing for some reason, and then, of course, I found them. The J&amp;R Moving Company that was very successful. The high fives in the hallways, being called Minnie Mouse instead of Raquel every day that I was at school. Playing football with the fifth graders and learning a few things. Pies in the face for wonderful tax scores. The many dance moves that we all shared, and we will continue to dance and thank them for making me a part of their lives and a part of their school. And also for the new adventure and the new career move that I have with my new family at Webb. So thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal at Arlington High School, Mr. Matthew Gergens. Next, I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal at Arlington High School, Mr. Matthew Good. Matthew attended the University of Texas at Arlington, received his Bachelor of Arts in Spanish, University of Texas at Arlington received his Master of Education. Matthew's been a Fort Worth ISD secondary Spanish teacher, secondary Spanish teacher in Burdison ISD, and Matthew, congratulations, and anyone you'd like to introduce, anything you'd like to say?
Dr. Cavassos, President Baron, members of the board, just like to take the opportunity to thank all of you for giving me the chance to further my educational career and to serve the community and the students of Arlington High School. I'd like to present and thank my wife, Desiree, who braves traffic all the way from Keller to be here with our brood in tow, my daughter Gracie, son Brayden, the loud but adorable Presley, and the probably sleeping on the floor Blake. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And I'm sure Matthew wanted to thank Jennifer Young as well. So I'm helping you out, Matthew. All right, next I'd like to introduce the assistant principal of South Davis Elementary School, Mr. Gary Alderson. Gary received his degree from Chicago State University and Texas A&amp;M University, his masters, and Lamar University, another masters in counseling. Gary's been an excellent teacher, special ed teacher at Duncanville ISD, he's worked in Dallas ISD as a teacher, and especially a teacher in the Chicago Public Schools. Gary, welcome and congratulations, and anything you'd like to say, anybody you'd like to introduce?
First, I would like to thank President Baron, members of the board, and also you, Dr. Cavassos. I would also like to thank my wife and my three children for always being constant support and always encouraging me to reach my expectations. It's absolutely a tremendous honor to be selected to serve in Arlington ISD, and I look forward to my futures here in the school district, and I just appreciate you giving me the opportunity. Thank you.
Now we have a few administrative remarks here. We're going to jump over the open forum for agenda items for one action item, and then we'll do a few things and we'll come back in and we'll do the open forum for agenda items. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Baron. This time we'd like to recommend that we consider the interlocal agreement between the Arlington ISD and the city of Arlington and the donation of a fire truck.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hogg, second by Mr. Hibbs to approve the acceptance of the fire truck from the city of Arlington. Please vote. All voting in the affirmative. Dr. Cavassos, would you go pick up the keys? Okay, folks, that's what we're going to do. After we do appointments, we have a receiving line, so if all the appointees will go with Ms. Evans out to the front, start the receiving line, please let the board go through first, and we're going to keep on going right out to the fire truck to get some pictures at the fire truck and formally accept it, and then we're going to come back in here, and Chief, would you like to say something? Chief?
Thank you, President Baron, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. My name's Don Crowson, I'm the Fire Chief Director of Emergency Management of the Fire Department, and it's tough to follow cute kids, smart young adults, and popular principals. So I come bearing a gift and I I'm very excited about our partnership. I've been to so many school functions, I feel like I'm a member of Dr. Cavassos' staff, but I may not be, but I'm certainly on the team. We're going to do whatever we can to make a difference in the school district, whatever we can do our small part to help, and we're excited about it. So look forward to great things, and in maybe five years I can bring you another fire truck, we'll see. All right?
Good deal. Thank you. Now, if you'd let the board get a head start on you, we're going to go through the receiving line and go out to the fire truck, and we'll be back here in about five or 10 minutes. Thank you. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen, we're back. The next item on our agenda is the open forum for agenda items. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for the open forum. I have five cards from our audience tonight. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. Our first speaker tonight is Steve Meeks, representing Linebarger. His subject is the tax contract. Good evening, Mr. Meeks.
Meeks, thank you. Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, I'm Steve Meeks, I'm the managing partner for Linebarger here in Tarrant County. Three years ago, we were proud to be awarded your delinquent tax contract, and we promised you that we would increase your collections and fix the bankruptcy problems that you had. We did that. We're proud to say we delivered on both fronts. You made the right decision three years ago, and we want you to make that same decision again. That decision was reaffirmed twice during this period of time. We were asked to do an RFP, and in the RFP, we were asked to give comparable data, and in your RFP, the comparable data said that it had to be the size, scope, and economic environment of districts such as Arlington ISD. We gave those, and we also gave Arlington ISD, which is what we collected for you. Arlington ISD figures there, your figures were not used in this evaluation. We're concerned about that process. There was a matrix that was done that used what they called weighted averages, but the weighted averages or the comparables that the other firms submitted were Highland Park ISD, Carroll-Southlake ISD, Grapevine-Colliville, Mansfield, and a couple of others. Again, it was the size, scope, and economic environment. We think that that's apples and telephone poles. If you have delinquent taxes in Highland Park or Southlake, you either forgot to pay them or your maid put them on the wrong desk. We are asking you to look at your numbers. We can show you that your numbers, even on the weighted matrix scale from the Moke folks, your figures are higher collection rates than the average of the five with the other firm. Those were never looked at, although we submitted them. They were not looked at, or at least they were not put in the matrix. So we would ask you to take some time and look at those numbers, because what's important is what's collected here, not what's collected in Highland Park. We're also the only firm that can offer your taxpayers consolidation. That means they only have to go to one law firm. We represent the city, the county, and the school. We think that's important, and we also saw something in the proposal that literally just, it's like a ball peen hammer. The other firm has offered to pay up to $15,000 to the Moke Casey firm for this evaluation. We've just never heard of that before. I think that's a conflict of interest, that you would pay, the firm that's evaluating you, pay them for that. Thank you. One minute. Well, I would just ask you, nothing's going to happen if you have some time. You're not going to fall off the cliff. Collections will not be stopped, but I think for your citizens, it's important for you to look at your numbers, the numbers we collected for you, the actual dollars compared to the other competitors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Our next speaker is Barbara Williams, representing Linebarger. Subject is the tax collection contract. Good evening, Ms. Williams.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Cavassos, Mr. Baron, and board members, thank you for allowing us to be here. I'm Barbara Williams with Linebarger, I'm a partner there. I would like to speak with you also about the evaluation process. The process was scored, 50% of it was scored weighted toward experiences and references. We were downgraded one and a half points on that. Well, in regard to experience, that's a little bit disconcerting for us. We are the leading litigator in Tarrant County, we file more lawsuits than anybody else, we are the largest collection firm in the United States, we have over 1,000 staff members compared to our competitors' 358 staff members, we have twice the number of attorneys, we have 106 compared to their 52, and on a local level, you have a chart before you. We have a comparison of attorney years and experience. You can see that the attorneys that are working for you now have a total of 195 years of experience. That's a few years. It's a few years behind the belt. Those on Purdue's side, there were only eight on their website, so there may be another ninth one somewhere because they said they had nine attorneys, but these eight have 81 years' experience, and I don't think you're going to find that one additional attorney that's going to have 114 years' experience that would make up that difference. So we have significantly more experience. Three of these attorneys combined have five years' experience. We have one man with 42, we have somebody with 37, 28, you know, we're well-seasoned attorneys. So we don't know why we were downgraded on experience. In regard to references, our proposal had letters from your mayor here, Robert Kluck, we had a reference letter from your commissioner in Arlington, Andy Nguyen, from the county judge Glenn Whitley, from Fort Worth Mayor Betsy Price, and from the Tarrant County Tax Assessor Collector Ron Wright. Who else do you need? So we had the experience, we have the references, why were we downgraded? The next issue is the comparables. The RFQ asks for collection numbers from empty similar in size, scope, and economic environment. I went to TEA's website and looked at their statistics for several of the districts that were used in the comparable numbers, or so-called comparable numbers. The first issue I looked at was the value per pupil. In Arlington, it's 293,000. In Highland Park, it's 1.7 million. In Grapevine-Colliville, it's 750,000. Now, is that comparable? The next issue I looked at was ethnic composition. In Arlington, the minorities make up 74.9%, Highland Park makes up 10.4%, they have 30 African-Americans in the entire district, and Carroll ISD has 20.8%. The next issue was economically disadvantaged. Arlington has 65.4%, Highland Park has 0%, 0%, and Carroll has 2%. The weighted average did not take that into account. It only took into account the tax size, but not the scope or economic environment. So the scoring is obviously skewed. Please don't allow fuzzy math to trick you into getting rid of a successful tax collection program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Our next speaker tonight is Nancy Primo, representing Linebarger, the tax contract.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Nancy Primo, and I've been the regional manager for the Linebarger Law Firm for the past 26 years. Prior to that, I was the Tax Assessor Collector for the City of Dallas in the Dallas Independent School District. As you know, three years ago, this board switched delinquent tax firms and hired Linebarger because you believed that your previous law firm was not maximizing your collections and was leaving precious delinquent dollars uncollected. You compared Purdue's performance for Arlington ISD to ours, Linebarger's, for comparable clients. So your logic was right, and you made a great decision that night. Arlington ISD needed every tax dollar then, and the same is certainly true tonight. Linebarger delivered on our promise. We not only increased your collections in our first year, but we've collected over 113.8 million dollars in the past 33 months, and tonight you're being asked to make a bad decision. You're being asked to reverse your previous decision based on collections data and comparisons that are both flawed and incomplete. Let me share with you just three of my concerns. Linebarger's actual statistics for Arlington ISD were not used in the evaluation, as you just heard, and we're so proud of our collection results for Arlington ISD. We submitted them thinking that they would really be used as a standard to which you would compare all others. So I'm really confused and rather amazed why the Arlington ISD information was simply not considered. The selection team had the data, but for the reasons chose to exclude it from the analysis. If you'd allow me to read from the Dan Casey's correspondence to Arlington ISD that was shared with us. Arlington ISD data are shown in the far right column of the matrix, but were not used in these calculations. You know, it's easy for our competitors to promise anything, but our collection statistics for you should be used as the measuring stick. In fact, what you've heard, haven't heard tonight, is that our performance for Arlington ISD is better and higher than Purdue's weighted average for their so-called five comparison clients. Again, I'm going to refer to two handouts that extract that data from the matrix that you've received. Linebarger's three-year average for you, Arlington ISD, was 76.87%. That's a fact. Purdue's overall average for their clients is 75.56%. Let me say that again. Our results for you, Arlington ISD, is higher than the average for all five of Purdue's clients. clients. Meaning quite simply that if you were to switch back to Purdue, you would actually be losing revenue based on their own performance. I ask you, does that make any sense? Instead, the consultant and selection team removed Arlington ISD and compared five other Linebarger clients to five Purdue clients. So, you're being asked to make a bad decision tonight based on a lot of suppositions, a lot of coulda, woulda, shouldas. And I ask you, you should be saying, how does everybody else stack up to us? And finally, if you're going to be asked to put your revenue at risk, at least compare data on similar clients. I can assure you, all the clients Linebarger submitted are far more similar to Arlington ISD to any of the clients offered by Purdue. So, I ask you, who do you compare yourself to? Does anyone seriously believe Highland Park ISD is comparable to Arlington ISD, a rich boutique school district with 6,800 students, or wealthy Carroll ISD with 7,800 students? But Mansfield ISD, which is half the size of Arlington ISD, is probably the closest in the list of Purdue's rich school districts. And Purdue's three-year collection average for Mansfield ISD is only 63.6%. Again, that compares to our Arlington ISD three-year collection percent average of Now, MindMath says our results for you are 13% higher than those of Mansfield ISD, their most similar client. So, I'm concerned. I'm very concerned that the Arlington ISD information wasn't used as the standard to set the bar in this analysis. And so, when we exclude, substitute, pick, and choose, you really can come up with a flawed recommendation. So, hopefully tonight, you will once again choose Linebarger to continue to collect your delinquent taxes. We truly hope so. So, please don't go backwards and put your revenue at risk. We have a great program here in place for you. So, at least delay this important decision and ask for more data. Allow us to both come and share with you all the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Primo. Next speaker is Peggy McCormick, representing Linebarger regarding the tax contract.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Peggy McCormick, and I live at 1216 Boardwalk Street in Arlington, Texas, and I have for 22 years. But I'm also the operations manager for Linebarger Goggan Blair &amp; Sampson. I want to follow up on Nancy's comments about the evaluation process. Let me take a step back to the proposal process and our reasoning in, on our comparable jurisdictions. We thought it truly important to show you real comparable clients. That's what you asked for in your RFQ, jurisdiction similar to Arlington ISD in size, scope, and economic environment. We gave you six comparable jurisdictions, including you, Arlington ISD. What could be more relevant than you? And your city, Arlington, city of Fort Worth, and Keller. But in our original proposal, we had also included two very large urban school districts in Bear County, Northside ISD and San Antonio ISD, the first and third largest school districts in Bear County, and almost exactly the same size as Arlington. I would point out that the analysis shown in the letter from Moak-Casey does not include those two jurisdictions. And frankly, our collection numbers were extremely high for those two clients. So, it hurt when we were told they were not comparable enough, especially when evidently Highland Park, Carroll, and Grapevine-Collivale are comparable enough. How can these school districts be similar to Arlington in size, scope, and economic environment? It takes an enormous amount of resources to put a successful collection program in place for a district as large and diverse as Arlington. But Steve Meeks and his team have done everything you've asked of them and more. They filed almost 1,500 lawsuits, taken 425 judgments, and personally visited 760 businesses. You now have unparalleled bankruptcy representation. We filed over 18,000 claims in Tarrant County since you've hired us. We've set 34 properties for constable sales, and you know of the resale program that we've set up on your behalf, which has pictures of every property listed on our website. And as for mailings, no firm does more than us. We do six mass mailings a year, each and every one coordinated with the tax office. But let me speak about the collection percentages that you have been shown. Frankly, the only numbers you should focus on are yours. The analysis presented by your consultant could only find a 1.14% difference between our two firms. And that was only after they disqualified our two most comparable school districts and disregarded your own numbers, 1.14%. Remember, this is the same firm you let go three years ago, and we came in and increased your collections. You were so pleased with our first-year results. We had increased collections by more than 182,000, and frankly, collected quite a few bankruptcy accounts that your prior firm had not, that you've renewed our contract twice. And this was in spite of one of the worst economic downturns in decades. You made a great decision three years ago. Please don't go backwards. And so, I submit with all due respect to your consultant that their expertise is in school finance and ours is in delinquent tax collections. This methodology and analysis are flawed, and I'm beyond shocked that my school board is asked to be, is being asked to make such a critical decision in a vacuum that you haven't even looked at your own numbers. This is my school district, and I want you to make the right decision for all of us. So, I urge you to delay this vote until you've been given all the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Our final speaker tonight is Glenn Lewis, representing Linebarger. Subject is the tax contract. Good evening, Mr. Lewis.
Good evening, President Barron, and thank you for allowing me to speak, President Barron, board members, Dr. Cavassos. Three years ago...
Wait, just a moment, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. Three years ago, we were recommended by your staff. They recommended that you make a change to us after 28 years. They gave you several reasons for making that recommendation. First of all, they said, one of the reasons they gave is that we had superior bankruptcy representation, and we had a proven track record of that. There were specific cases mentioned to you. That has not changed. We still have superior. I happened to be in the previous public meeting you had, and when they asked that question, they said, "Well, the references tell us that the other firm has beefed theirs up." Maybe they have. But nobody, I don't think anybody who's being objective will tell you that theirs has beefed up to the point where it's better than ours, because ours has always been the standard, and it still is the standard. Another reason they gave you in their recommendation was that there were some benefits of consolidated collection. Well, that has not changed. We still have the consolidated collection that they told you three years ago, and there are still benefits to using just one law firm to collect the taxes for the entities as opposed to increasing court costs and confusing citizens by having to deal with two or three different law firms. That, that has not changed. And another, and another reason that they gave you, and another reason that we gave in our presentation, I don't know if they looked at the Arlington ISD numbers, but if you recall, we did. We submitted them. And we compared them with the city of Arlington, which we thought was the best comparison. It's the same area, same taxpayers for the most part, few minor differences. And there was a huge disparity. In the three years that we've represented you, we've narrowed that disparity significantly. We won't tell you that we've eliminated it altogether, but we narrowed it significantly. But what you're being asked to do now is change from a successful program to another program because you might, and I was in the room back there, you may get $27,000 more dollars a year. No guarantee of that, but you may. Or, let me put it this way, if they collect at the same rate that Highland Park collects and that Southlake Carroll collects, that you'll get $27,000 a year or more. Is that really a wise business decision? You have to ask yourself that. And, and anecdotally, you don't have to look at numbers between Highland Park. You don't have to know that they only have 6,000 students, and you've got a lot more. You don't have to know that the economic status is a lot different. Ask yourself, where would you rather have to collect bills, in Highland Park or in Arlington? In Southlake or in Arlington? Which do you think is the more difficult to do? And yet, those are the numbers that you're being asked to compare Arlington with. And, and, and also, I was back there, and you were told, "Well, we, we just took the five that they gave us." Well, no, that's not exactly true, because as my partner said, we gave you two, but they said, "Well, even," they were same size, same economics comparatively to Arlington ISD. And they said, "No, we can't use those because they're not in Dallas or Tarrant County or North Texas somewhere." Ask yourself, does geography make that, make the difference there in whether or not you can collect taxes? Or does those other factors that my partner Barbara Williams got from the TEA website, are those the factors that make the difference? Those are the questions you have to ask. We've had a successful program. We've done everything that we told you we would do, and we've done everything you've asked us to do, and nobody here will tell you that we haven't. What they're telling you is that you ought to change because we might possibly get $27,000 a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. And that concludes our open forum. Brings us to our action items. Next item on the agenda besides the fire truck is the, to consider bid 13-28. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. This time, we'd like to ask Cindy Powell to do a presentation regarding our delinquent tax collection services.
Good evening, President Barron, board members, Dr. Cavassos. First item, or I guess actually the second item on our action agenda is to consider a delinquent tax collection services, RFP. And as a background, delinquent property taxes are collected in our district by a qualified law firm. Currently, the law firm, Linebarger Goggan Blair &amp; Sampson, collects those taxes for us, and as you've heard, they have since 2009. That was the last time we issued an RFP for this service. And that contract expires December 31st, 2012. So, we have issued a new RFQ or RFP process to procure delinquent tax collection services for this next period of time. What you have on the slide before you is a description of the process that we've used for this procurement. First of all, we engaged the services of Moak-Casey &amp; Associates, a legislative consulting firm that has expertise in school finance, to assist us with this process. We did issue a request for a proposal. We mailed it to six firms. We advertised it. We posted on our website. We held a pre-bid conference for anyone who was interested in proposing. We received two proposals, one from the firm Linebarger Goggan Blair &amp; Sampson, and the other from Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins &amp; Mott. We evaluated these proposals. We requested a significant amount of data in the submissions. We basically did side-by-side comparison of the two submissions. We interviewed the proposers. We analyzed the comparable data that they were required to submit as part of the RFP process, and we checked references. We checked with two firms, I'm sorry, two clients for each of the respective firms. We also talked with the Tarrant County Tax Assessor-Collector about both firms because they have experience with both firms. I can tell you that all of the references for both firms were excellent. The evaluation committee that worked on this process was comprised of myself, the executive director of finance, Tony Drolinger, Brent West, our accounting director, and Dan Casey from Moak-Casey &amp; Associates. The comparable collection data, this is pretty much what, what our award boiled down to was collection experience. And I think you heard the term a few minutes ago, experience, and we were not referring to years' experience of attorneys. We are looking at experience, collection experience in, across the body of clients that they submitted to us. In the RFP, we asked that, that the firms submit data for at least five entities in one of these five counties, Tarrant, Dallas, Denton, Collin, and/or Johnson County. We were looking specifically at three tax years. These were the three most recent completed tax years that have been turned over to delinquent attorneys for collection. And we required that the firms submit their source data from the tax office to help us substantiate the information that they supplied for the collection histories. We had an individual in our accounting department went through and validated all that data against the matrices that were submitted as part of the proposals. And we actually, we used two different methods to analyze collection percentages for both firms. We have two methods, as I said, and I'm going to describe briefly both of them. First is, we called it very affectionately, method one, and it is a more traditional, detailed approach to looking at collections for the 12-month period after delinquent accounts are turned over to the tax attorneys. Basically, you take adjusted collections and divide that by adjusted levy, the beginning levy that was turned over to the attorneys. The adjustments that are made were ordered by TAD as part of the normal adjustment process. We also adjusted collections for split payments, and we added refunds back into collections. Then finally, again, the collection percentages were weighted, as you've heard, and Dan Casey's going to speak to that in just a moment. Rather than taking the individual collection percentages for each of the five entities and averaging those, which would have resulted in an average of the average, we chose to do a weighted average by taking the actual collection data across all the comps that were submitted and dividing that by the tax basis for all the comps that were submitted to come up with a weighting that would represent one generic percent of collection or collection experience again for, again, their, their body of work that they submitted to us. The second method is a much more simplistic look at the tax levies, and it simply takes the beginning levy that's turned over to attorneys on July 1st, the end of a tax year, and then looks at the levy again 12 months later. Takes the difference between the two and says essentially, that is, that's going to capture adjustments in all collections. Then you divide that number by that beginning levy balance. That results in a collection percentage. Again, we weighted that across all the submissions, and Mr. Casey's going to speak to that, that that was in, in, for the purpose of mitigating the effects of any difference in size of the entities that were submitted. The information that you see on the screen is simply a summary of the collection percentages using those weighted averages for each of the firms for the three years that were requested and the three-year weighted average. You've got this information in your packet and in the Moak-Casey report that was submitted to us. I'm going to ask at this time, Mr. Casey, this is Dan Casey, partner with Moak-Casey &amp; Associates, to come and speak about the analysis that they did on collections.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Dr. Cavassos, I'm Dan Casey with Moak-Casey &amp; Associates. Just a couple of comments with, with regard to the comparison groups. I think that when we looked at these, and I was not as uncomfortable with them, I think in part because we've worked a lot with Northwest ISD and Keller over the years, and I don't think they're, they are that disparate from some of the others that are shown as far as Mansfield, Grapevine-Collivale. I mean, Highland Park is somewhat unique. I think Cedar Hill, and I'm just, I have to go back and look, but I think probably is more comparable with Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD as far as demographics, perhaps closer to that. But there was not as, I think, as large a disparity as suggested in the comments that were made earlier, at least amongst the school districts that were, were presented here. What we did, and one of my concerns when we first looked at these, and I think the approach used in the past was to, to average averages, so we basically took the, the five, the five taxing units that were compared, basically compiled those, and then came up with a weighted average for each of the years shown, and then for the combination of the three years shown. And, and the, and as is indicated in the report, they're not, the first methodology, which, which Ms. Powell just described, is about 1.14% difference and 4.9% on the other. So, not huge differences, but there was, there was a, a difference given this set of districts in, in the methodologies used. Now, a couple... given this set of districts and, and the methodologies used. Now, a couple of other things, and I think you've had some comments, this is, this is an important element for this district. We have worked with a number of districts that are what we call high target revenue districts, and for their first dollar of tax effort, largely what they collect doesn't really matter particularly because the state offsets that, and you're not in that position. So I think that this is important for, for Arlington. Delinquent collections are important. I've looked at some of the estimates we had for 13, 14, and 14, 15 with the estimates we were using. The other factor for Arlington is that, in fact, you do generate additional state aid from the additional collections efforts roughly, we're working with estimates of roughly $100,000 a year in our model on, on the, the state aid side. As far as the comparisons, and I did use just, Mr. Lewis had mentioned, just as an illustration and not suggesting this is the impact, but if you look at, at the illustration for 1.14% increase in delinquent collections, it was about a $27,000 gain, 4.9%, about $115,000 gain, just to, but that was really to illustrate that increased collections are, are a factor and on the margin, I think, do offer some benefit to you as far as your budget's concerned. Now, with regard to the comment made about the $15,000 for consultants, I'm not sure where that, I mean, I'm not sure where that came from in the proposal. We have, we have a separate contract with, with Arlington ISD, I think for $5,000 to work on this project. So it's not, not anything, we don't have any relationship with Purdue, Brandon, never have had, that I can, in 15 years that I can recall. And so I'm not sure where that came from, or, but I don't think it, I don't think it's anything we certainly pursued or thought would be appropriate. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Ms. Powell, did you have more?
I guess I do. I think one thing I would like to share with you is proposed fees. Again, we take the proposals, place them side-by-side. The proposals are very similar, frankly. The district does not pay anything for tax collection services. That fee is paid borne by the delinquent taxpayer. The, both firms propose to charge delinquent tax, taxpayers 15% of the total amount due, and again, nothing is charged to AISD by either firm. The fees for filing bankruptcy claims, there are none. There was a difference in the fees proposed for providing property value study appeals and property value audits. Both those services are, or neither of those services, rather, are things that we have gone to the delinquent tax attorneys to seek in the past. We have other avenues for that. In looking at the services and the other benefits that are provided to the district by both firms, again, very similar. The Purdue firm offered to reimburse the district though 100, up to $126,000 for our delinquent, or rather, for our tax collection fees that we pay to Tarrant County. And that compares to a recommendation or a proposal of $75,000 from Limebarger. It has been mentioned that the Purdue firm did offer to reimburse an amount up to $15,000 for the consultant that helps with this procurement. That is something from the start, that when, as soon as we saw it, we said that was not something that this district felt we should be doing in, in order to maintain an independence and objectivity here. So that was not something that we ever intend to, to act on. Both firms offered to, to continue their contributions and participation with the Education Foundation and various other organizations that support the school district. This is a summary of the scoring matrix. You can see at the bottom that the points are very comparable, 98.75 for Purdue to 95.25 for Limebarger. So the two firms are very, very similar. And again, the differentiation here is primarily, has to do with collection percentages or experience. That is in that first category. And the approach to services and methodology, very slight difference there in terms of the proposer profile, which is where the qualifications of personnel come into play. Both firms scored an equal score in that category. So it's the recommendation of administration that the law firm of Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins &amp; Mott be awarded a contract for collection of delinquent tax, delinquent property taxes for a one-year period and would have an option to renew for three additional one-year periods. With that, we will be happy to, one more point here is that the basis of our recommendation, summary of the items you've seen here, again, it primarily boils down to the collection percentages for the comps submitted. We did identify that in terms of the local office, they both have local offices, the, the Purdue law firm has a significantly number, or greater number of attorneys in the local office that we feel could be of benefit to our local taxpayers. And then the higher offset of the cost of current year tax collections. Again, there was a variation there between the two firms. The Limebarger firm did offer or propose as part of their submission that they would match any other offer. The individuals on the evaluation committee felt that it was most appropriate to look at the initial specific recommendations that were submitted. There was a question raised earlier, I think, or some statements made about consolidated collections, and I can tell you that we spoke to the Tarrant County Tax Assessor. We were talking about their experience with the two different firms, and we asked him about consolidated collections and is there, is there a benefit to having consolidated collections? And he told us very specifically, and I documented in my notes, that he could argue that either way. He did not think that there was a significant benefit to having the consolidated collections. So that, that was shared with us. In terms of, there was also, I think, a question raised about would changing firms disrupt our operations? And the answer's no. It's as simple as we send a letter to our current law firm requesting our files. Those files are transferred to the new law firm. We also submit information to Tarrant County Tax Office, letting them know who will be collecting our delinquent taxes on our behalf. So there's, there's no disruption to any workflow here for staff. We did go through this three years ago, and it was a very seamless process. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you've got.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Oh, Ms. Poppa, Mr. Poppa.
Thank you, President Barron. Ms. Powell, we talked a little bit about this process, about this contract. As we know, it can be a little bit politically hot and, you know, people get pretty excited about it. At the end of the day, it didn't cost us anything.
That's correct.
It didn't cost the school district a dime for what they do. And it sounds like we have two fine law firms. The, the comparisons were real close. But just for additional transparency, talk to me a little bit more about the, how you evaluated the experience.
The experience, and again, the experience is collection percentages and collection experience. It's not the length of service or qualifications of the attorneys. That was in a separate category. So the experience, we ask again for the proposers to submit collection data from five other clients in five areas within the metroplex, and then we waited all that collection data to come up really with a single collection rate for all of those comps that mitigated the differences in size and type of the, the tax bases and the collections across all of the firms. We did not include Arlington ISD in this analysis. We did not feel like that it was appropriate or valid to include Arlington in the mix of firms that's being evaluated. We actually even had a conversation with Dr. Carter, our director of accountability and testing, who has extensive experience in statistics, and he affirmed that for us, that that would really not be correct or proper to include Arlington in the mix of districts that we were, or entities that we were looking at in evaluating collection experience.
And that was going to be my follow-up question. So first of all, let me clarify, then, your top line, where it's talking about experience is really more on performance?
Right. It's, it's collection experience across all the-
But how they perform across the-
Right. It's not, it's not years' experience of attorneys. It's not qualifications or background, or, you know, where they graduated from law school or anything like that. It is the collection-
So that's where the comps-
Right.
-really affect that line right there?
Yes.
And so because in the comps that you ran, Purdue was a little higher, that's where they had the edge on, on that line?
Right. And, and I will say, you know, speaking to the attorneys themselves, over the past four years, we've worked with both firms now. We've been with Purdue. We've then switched three years ago to Limebarger, so we have experience with both. The individuals who work for these, these two firms are just outstanding, and they're all very well-qualified. This boiled down to the submission of the comp data, essentially. That, that was the key point there that, that led to our recommendation.
I'm not a mathematician or a statistician, but I'm still trying to understand why AISD's performance data is not, is not taken into account.
Well, and-
I mean, you said it's not, and it's not supposed to be. I don't understand why.
And looking at the averages of the comps submitted by both firms, if we include ourselves in there, that really almost waits, gives weight to the incumbent, where we're looking for independent analysis of comparable collection effort and experience across the body of their clients, their client base. And so I don't know if Mr. Casey has anything else he would add to that, or?
Is Dr. Carter here? Maybe he can speak. I saw him earlier.
Adam.
Dr. Carter, you want to illuminate me a little bit? I mean, I'm hearing it's not, but I still don't understand why not. Seems like when, when I'm, when I'm looking at evaluating contractors for my business, I usually evaluate how the current, the contractor's doing, how they're performing versus with what they're doing for me versus somebody else that may want my business. So I'm still trying to understand this.
Yeah. The, the only thing I could say about that is that, first of all, there's no other district that's exactly like Arlington. So when you're trying to do comparability of, of, you know, a set of districts out there, it, it's called exclude your, the current, the current district, just because what you're trying to do is you're just trying to say, let's, let's, let's give this kind of comparison of this group to this group. And it's, it's kind of like just the external validation strictly. And when you, you know, you can almost look at it in terms of prediction, in, in a way, that this group of, of districts over here with whatever level of performance it is, it predicts certain kind of thing for Arlington. This over here, it's almost okay. This group of, of districts, it might suggest some prediction of performance for Arlington. Well, Arlington already has it, so it's already there, but this other group over here has higher prediction factors, if you will. Okay? So in that regard, it, it should be one of those things of, with that comparable, with that kind of comparison with those two, given that it's equal, a little bit more, you know, I don't know about all the other things dealing with the, you know, the various levels of comparability of individual districts and all that business. But I'm just saying, as a set of comparisons of districts, this district's over here has a higher factor that should be more predictive of a higher performance. Okay? Does that help at all?
I understand that, but I mean, wouldn't actual performance with our district be a, a good predictor on how they're going to continue to perform in the future?
It's a, it's an exact one. It's just, it's, it's the, it's one of those things of, but if you had something else over here that might suggest a higher prediction, which you don't have, of course, is you don't have the actual, you know, performance itself. It's only a prediction of it. But that factor is higher. That suggests a, a higher level of performance.
And this is something that is a practice in statistical analysis and mathematics, not just for school districts, but when you're comparing other-
Yes.
-data?
When you're coming in, yeah. It's like program evaluation. You try to level the playing field any possible way you can, removing any extraneous variables. And it just so happens that when it's trying to, to look at comparability of these two sets, in some ways, in a very strange way, our district becomes an extraneous variable, just in terms of looking at those two sets. Okay? It's, it's one of those kind of odd kinds of things like in program evaluation, but you try to control for, like I said, extraneous variables, and that's just, that's what you do.
Well, Dr. Carter, you're a lot smarter than I am. I'm just going to take your word for it because I'm-
This is dicey, and, and I can just say, measurement error. Would this be one of those things that would be, you know, a conclusion that you would say, oh, this definitely is beyond, you know, this confidence interval? No, it's very tight. It is, it is close. But, but you go with what is the, the higher predictive, prediction factor.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Ms. Powell, I have one, one final question for you. So this is all really close. I mean, both, both, as I said, fine law firms, good community partners, all the way around. Why do you want to change then, if it's that close?
Well, we have a, a RFP that called for a set period of time, contract period. We're coming to the end of that. I think that, that we have made a decision as a district to periodically put this out and see what opportunities are there. And based on the criteria that we specified in our RFP, the data we've received, our analysis, we feel like that the recommendation to award this to Purdue is the best one at this time for the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, President Barron.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
President Barron, I make a motion that we accept the administration's recommendation in moving forward with Purdue.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Mrs. Solins to accept the recommendation of the administration. All members present voting in the affirmative. The motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the proposed boundary changes for Atherton, Hale, Johns, and Sherri Street. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, we'd like to recommend the boundary changes for the Atherton Elementary, Hale Elementary, Johns Elementary, and establish boundaries for Sherri Street Elementary. So we've been working on this process and have several committee meetings, and Mr. Walker is here to present the boundary recommendations.
Can't get it out. Did I miss the last one?
Is this, is this your last presentation, Mr. Walker?
No. I may be back.
Let us know when it's the last one. We'll ask as many questions as possible.
Lots of questions.
I think it may be my last one.
We do want to show the video.
It said video on. That's what I, that's the question. We got video?
No.
Your retirement party.
We thought we'd let you retire with a little dignity, you know?
I appreciate that. President Barron, members of the board, Superintendent Cavassos, tonight, the boundary committee is here to make the presentation on the proposed boundary changes for Atherton, Hale, Johns, and Sherri Street Elementary. The committee conducted open forums at all schools and gained valuable input from all citizens. And we, after gaining input from the citizens, the committee met to make the adjustments from the information received from the citizens. And here to make the presentation tonight is our boundary chairperson, Ms. Stacy Bruce, and along with our demograph, demographer, Mr. Rocky Guarnes. So at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Stacy Bruce to come up and make the presentation. going to ask Ms. Stacy Bruce to come up and make the presentation. And I don't think this is the one.
We have the presentation, so if you have a copy there, just go through it.
So is this not working? Oh, no. Okay. Okay, we had our three open forums. And before we start, I'd like the committee to please stand up, those that are present, because we put a lot of hard work. Okay, we had our open forums. The first one was at Hale Elementary School on Tuesday, October 16th of 2012, and two members of the community were present, and both had some input and some addresses concern, input and addressed concerns. The next was at Johns Elementary School on Wednesday, October 17th. Nine members of the community were present, and five gave, gave input and addressed concerns. And our last one was Atherton Elementary on Thursday, October 18th. Thirty members of the community were present, eleven gave input and addressed concerns. Some of the concerns that they, that they proposed to us were transfer students, they wanted them grandfathered into Atherton, Hale, and Johns Elementary if the students are currently enrolled in those schools. The second was safety of students walking across Mayfield to attend Atherton from the Mayfield Park Apartments. Parents also wanted a permanent boundary established between Hale and Atherton, and not to share boundaries anymore. And students staying at school for after-school programs will not have a crossing guard when they are crossing Mayfield. So we met again on Monday, October 22nd, at Hale Elementary, and we met to address those concerns that the parents and teachers had brought up for us. The committee discussed and agreed to move the crossing guards from Legend Street to Sherry Street to accommodate students walking to Atherton and Hale. And the committee discussed and agreed to have the demographer include present transfers into the boundary option voted on by the committee, and to have this plan available for the next meeting on October 29th. We met again Monday, October 29th, at Johns Elementary. The demographer presented the boundary plan to the committee that included existing transfer students in the plan. And after two hours of discussing the plan, the committee reached consensus on the boundary plan that will include existing transfer students being allowed to stay at Atherton, Hale, and Johns Elementary. Now, if you don't have any questions from me, I can turn it over to Rocky Gardner, our demographer, or if you have questions. I didn't have to push the button. See?
Good evening, President Barron, board. It's a pleasure to be with Dr. Cavassos, I'm sorry. Okay, so, this is going to be real quick, because I think I, I don't have to push the button twice. I think there's only two slides here. I mean, this really hasn't changed from what, what we've talked about in the past. This just shows the existing boundaries that were there for Atherton, Hale, and Johns, and then the new boundary that includes the Sherry Street Elementary School. I think this is a, this is pretty much the plan that we, that we started with, pretty close. I mean, we, we had up to three plans at one point, but this is where we narrowed it down. And you can see there, the break between Atherton and Hale at Mayfield with the apartment complex across the street that's also going to be included in Atherton. And when it came to, to the enrollment forecast, what, what we've done is we, we took the reside enrollment, and we added to it and subtracted from the in, in-out transfers based on official transfers. We've got a, a number of, you know, when we geocode the students, we, we can, we can see which students are attending which school based on where they live. And then we went ahead, and the school district, they provided me with the exact numbers to, to, for the in-and-outs based on paper transfers. So, so we took those out, and then we forecasted going forward. And you can see, see, you can see the enrollment projections. My eyes can't see them, but I hope you guys can see them. Oh, you got, you got it in front of you? Good, good, because that's a little tough. So you can see our enrollment projections there. All the schools stay within capacity. I mean, we do have some capacity, you know, where we're right at the edge. I think at Hale there, next year, could be pretty close, as could Johns to start out with, and then things kind of level off. It's really going to be, you know, that first year after enroll, after a boundary change is always a little bit tough, because you just don't really know who's going to, who's going to stay. You know, we're assuming that they've put their paper transfer in, they're, they're going to a school because that's the school they want, want to be at. But we, we don't know what could change that, you know, having less students at Atherton could, could be attractive to a parent that's very, that lives very near and is now walking to Johns. So these, but our enrollment projections are based on verified transfers. And you can see that, that, the, the bottom chart is the one you're probably going to want to focus on, because that has, you know, what we had, the building loads. And keep in mind, that's when we took out the, the pre-care, we just used half the pre-k. So I think, I really think that's my only, yeah, that's it. I'm done pushing buttons. And we can go back and forth on a few, but be happy to take questions. Is that right, where we're at? It's been a pleasure.
I'm not sure if I heard it. The recommendations we heard from the parents at the meetings, we did implement all those recommendations, correct?
Yes.
Because they were great ideas. So I'm glad, glad we did those. So that's all I wanted to confirm.
When we moved the crossing guard, this is probably from Mr. Walker, from Legend to Sherry, is that in lieu of getting another crossing guard, or because we don't need the one at Legend anymore?
Well, we, we thought it would be the best place for the crossing guard, to move it from Legend to Sherry, to accommodate both schools, Atherton and Hale. Hale students cross, I mean, the Atherton students crossing from the, the apartment, and Hale students come from that area going to, to Hale. So we, we thought that that would be the best move to accommodate both schools with, with the kids having to cross Mayfield.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Peña.
Did you entertain the thought to add the other guard? Because I know that's really not our responsibility, it's the city's responsibility, but had, did we approach them so that they could have two? Because sometimes it's hard to break habits.
And, and right now, you know, we were just wanting to make the proposal tonight, and then if this is the recommendation, if this is the direction the board want to go, then we can talk to the city about possibility of two.
Yeah, I, I think that it'd probably be a good idea, at least ask, and if they say no, well, then it doesn't happen, but then we can accommodate both areas.
Right, and, and we would do that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Solins.
Thank you, President Barron. Dr. Cavassos, or maybe Mr. Walker, I'm not sure. When this is all said and done, the boundary changes are done, the elementary schools open, will there still be temporary buildings at Atherton Elementary School? Or Johns?
There shouldn't be. I don't think. You want to answer that, Jimmy?
Go ahead.
I like that, Jimmy. This is Jimmy's last board meeting, right? No, there shouldn't be any temporary buildings. Cindy, do you have a better estimation on that? I guess I'm on my own. There, there shouldn't be any.
That's great news, Superintendent Cavassos.
And that's, that's what we're hoping for, based on the projections.
Now, let me clarify that. There are some used for offices, so, but for classrooms, there shouldn't be any. Does that make sense? There, there's some that we use for staff, and we have that across the district. But for classrooms, that's our, that's our priority.
Great, great news. Thank you.
Mr. Papa?
Thank you, President Barron. At, at Hale Elementary, so we're still going to be over capacity, and it looks like it's, we're going to be over capacity for a while. How are we going to handle that? Is, what are we doing? Is there not going to be any portables? Well, I mean, even after we build that. Oh, after we build the next school, this, that one will take care of it.
Right, and, you know, the, the projection that we see now for Hale, they're not going to be able to capacity that much. So right now, we don't feel that there will be additional temporary buildings at, at Hale, based on the, the enrollment versus the capacity.
Okay, that's all I had, thanks.
Mr. Walker, I have a couple. When will we start seeing teacher transfers to the new building, or out of the old buildings, really?
And, and I think that that would probably come after the appointment of the principal, and I think that, you know, that follows directly after that, is when we appoint the principal for the new school. And I think that's when that transition start being made.
So is the plan really, other than adding a staff for the new building, the teacher numbers should stay about the same?
That is correct.
Okay. So a job for the superintendent and his staff is to, once this is formalized, to go ahead and change the website so that parents can type in and see where their child's really going to go?
That's correct. And also, we begin notifying the, the parents and having meetings to indicate which school you're going to go to, sending notification. I think, Jimmy, you, you have that ready?
Right. If this is the, the proposal that, that the board is going to approve, then we'll start that process tomorrow, notifying the parents of the changes. And the principal will start having their, their open houses for the parents to talk, especially for the new students, to talk to them about, you know, what they have offered their school, and welcome those students and parents prior to this next school year.
So will parents get a letter that says, this is your new school, or you have an option to transfer?
We will send, yes, we, we have those options, sixth graders being able to stay at the school, they have that option, as well as their siblings and the current transfers, the existing transfers. So we'll send that information out to them as well tomorrow.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Okay.
You can sit down for an hour, and then we'll-
All right.
Move for, move for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hogg? No. Motion by Mr. Hogg, second by Mr. Hibbs. Mr. Hibbs, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. Dr. Cavassos, so how quickly will we need to put a principal in place in order for, I'm sure that parents would like to know a little bit about that principal sometime in the spring, when they're trying to decide if they're going to make a transfer or not?
That's correct. And we're looking at February, March, to have that process and possibly named by March, at the latest.
Do you think, do you think that principal would shadow one of the current schools, John or Atherton or Hale?
That's a possibility, and, and also meet the parents and the students, and, and then prepare the school as they finalize and are ready to receive supplies and materials and furniture and things like that. That's really the work that comes in the spring semester for the new school.
Good. That's, I just want to clarify that, just in case any parents weren't sure, you know, am I going to lose my principal at Atherton to go to the new Sherry Street School or something, so?
Okay. We're voting on the boundary change. Please vote. All voting in the affirmative. Good job, Mr. Walker, and good job to the committee and the demographer. We certainly appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is to pick a name for the new elementary school. This one goes to Mrs. Peña, who had, headed up the committee.
Mr. President, the committee, which consisted of myself, Mr. Hibbs, and Ms. Solins, reviewed the nominations or the submissions, and the name we'd like to recommend to the board is James and Barbara Adams, a past principal and schoolteacher for the district.
Well, we didn't vote yet, hang on. That's coming out of committee, so it doesn't need a second. Any discussion? Mr. Hogg?
I'll say something. I think to the committee, we knew going in this would be very difficult from a decision, and especially when I talked to some of y'all, and I heard the names you had to choose from. The amount of highly qualified people in this district is unheard of, and the amount of people that are deserving in this district is unheard of. And unfortunately, we're not a fast-growth district, so we're not just building school after school right now. So having a school named after you is a big honor, and it's, I think, the hardest part, and I congratulate the committee, and I'm glad you three took it on, of trying to decide which one, who to name it after. I will say, there's other schools coming in the future, so our other ones that are very much deserving. We have many things to be named coming in the near future. But as a student who had the honor to ser, to be a student under James Adams, right when he came to Arlington High School, and his first full graduating class after we started. He started when I was in 10th grade, our first year, and I was his first full senior graduating class. Couldn't have been a better role model for us in Arlington. So I, I think it's a great decision by the committee, and I think James and Barbara and their children will be very excited for the whole Adams family. So congratulations on that decision.
I heard that you were one of Mr. Adams's favorite students.
If I vote for, if I, that's why I'm voting for him. Hopefully, he'll, it'll make up for everything I did at Arlington.
No further lights. Please vote. All voting in the affirmative. Congratulations, James and Barbara Adams Elementary School.
They haven't been told yet, so keep the secret, okay?
Yeah. We'll bring them in for a plaque laying or something, right? There you go. They don't have a choice. Always bank there. Next item on the agenda is to consider the legislative agenda, and Dr. Rice is going to do that, he'll be here in just a moment, so we'll skip that for now. Consider and take action on the resolution appointing consultants. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron, and we'd like to recommend the consultants as listed in our board book. Ms. Powell, do you have any presentation or any comment?
A brief comment. We are planning to sell our next increment of bonds in February, and that will be between 17, 18 million dollars. That will then just leave us with another amount about that same size for one more issue the following year. But the first step in, in beginning to sell bonds is to identify the financial advisor, the bond counsel, and that does the legal work on the bond issue, and the underwriters. And so we've recommended that we use First Southwest as the financial advisor, McCall, Park, Hurston, Horton as the bond counsel, and then a syndicate of underwriters of Southwest Securities, Wells, Fargo, and Stevens, Inc. And we've used these firms in the past, and they've been very successful in terms of the underwriters. And so we recommend them again, and, and First Southwest tells us the number of underwriters that are appropriate for a particular size issue, and three is the number that they recommend for this size issue. So we recommend the, the consultants that are listed in, in the board packet.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Board members with any questions?
Make a motion that we accept the administration's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Mrs. Peña, to accept the recommendation for bond counsel. Consultants?
Bond, bond consultants.
Yeah.
Professional consultants.
I'll read the whole thing. Consider and take action on a resolution appointing consultants and directing staffing consultants to prepare for issuance and sale of bonds. That's what you missed, meant to say, Mr. Hibbs? I knew it. Please vote. It's just, it's late. All members voting in the affirmative? The motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to consider the financing plan for the East Arlington construction. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. We've discussed previously the construction of schools in East Arlington, and have talked about the financing options, and Ms. Powell is here to review that financing option, and we have a recommendation.
Yes, at the November 15th meeting, we discussed a couple different options for funding new construction in East Arlington to relieve crowding in our elementary schools. On September 6th, the board approved a plan to construct two new elementaries and construct three classroom additions, and redraw boundaries in that East Arlington area to help give some relief to the schools in that area, the elementary schools. So November 15th, then we had a discussion about some possible ways to fund that plan. The new elementaries would each have a capacity of 900. One of those would be on the Workman Junior High Campus, another- another east of 360, and then three classroom building additions. There's another item on the consent agenda this evening to select the architect to begin the work with the classroom addition projects, and part of that scope of that engagement will be to help us select the specific sites that would accommodate the building additions. So the current or the present value estimated cost of these projects is $58 million. And so the plan that seemed to have the most support in our discussion on November 15 was one that would allow us to use all the $10 million that's included in the 2009 bond package for building additions, and then also some surplus funds from the 1999 bond issue to help acquire land and complete the building additions, and then to use surplus fund balance from the general fund to actually construct a new elementary school east of 360 and to finally complete the building addition projects. So this schedule kind of identifies those different resources and shows how those funds could be applied, and then finally at the bottom, the available balance of funds and those different sources after these expenditures. You'll see the column that says "Year." This is the year in which we would anticipate these buildings being opened. The building additions we are targeting to have open fall of 2014. The new elementary east of 360 would be August of 2015, and then potentially new elementary school on the Workman Junior High Campus would be open fall of 2016. If the board approves this plan, then staff will bring back to the board a resolution that would formally commit the funds and the general fund and the 1999 bond fund and the 2009 bond funds for this purpose. And we've had a couple of discussions over the past year about committing funds. It's a fairly new requirement to governmental accounting standards. If we want to designate a particular portion of fund balance for a specific need, then it is formally committed, and we would do that via resolution. So we would bring that back to you if the board approves the plan this evening. So that'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
President Barron, I would like to try to see if I can get this. I move that we consider the financing plan for the East Arlington construction as laid out by the administration.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Hibbs, second by Mrs. Sullins. Is there any discussion? Mr. Pompa?
Thank you, President Barron. I wasn't here for that meeting in November, so I have a couple of questions. Specifically, why are we looking at funding new construction, which normally we do with a bond, out of our general fund rather than actually proposing as a bond and leaving the general fund resources, which we have more flexibility in how to utilize them? We can only do new construction with a bond, but our general fund resources, we have more flexibility. So tell me about why do it that way?
We have surplus funds in the general operating fund, and we have an opportunity to go ahead and accelerate a construction process rather than wait until potentially as long as 2014 to have a bond election. Our very, very tentative planning, it looks like that would be the earliest, that we would hold a bond election, given the facilities assessment that we intend to begin this next spring. So by the time that work finishes, and then you have a bond advisory committee that works through that information, prioritizes needs, sets the bond package, you're looking at probably fall 2014 for a bond election would be the earliest you could do that. And so by using surplus funds that are already available to us, you avoid issuing more debt, number one, and then number two, we're able to go ahead and provide that relief in East Arlington much sooner.
What does that debt usually cost us?
The debt right now, of course, with rates being low, 3% to 4% on new issue. I can't remember exactly how much, what the rate was on last year's issue. I think it was close to four, it was three-something.
And over what length of time usually to pay that kind of a debt?
For new construction, usually it's 25 years. When we buy like buses, you know, we typically repay the bonds over the life of the asset. 25 years is as long as this district goes, and that's for brand-new construction. When we issue bonds for like buses, it's generally 10 years, and then computer equipment, technology equipment is five years.
I'm just a little bit leery of, we have a very healthy balance, and that's a testament to this board and this administration over the last several years in being very fiscally conservative and responsible. I think we're in a great position, and not a lot of school districts in Texas especially can say that. So I think that's great. I'm a little bit leery of utilizing money that is very flexible in terms of how we use it for something that we could potentially use as a bond. Now, I am also very interested in resolving this overcrowding issue as quickly as possible, and I think everybody else is as well, because first of all, there's no reason we should be here today with this overcrowding issue, but we are, and so we have to fix it as quickly as possible. But I, you know, I wish we had some other ways of doing, still getting started now, but being able to ask the voters for bond money specifically to use for construction, because that's all that we can use it for. We know we have a very aggressive strategic plan, and we're allocating some funds from our fund balance to that. I don't know what's coming up in the future in terms of that strategic plan. There is going to be a second one that will start probably in about a year, that may be even larger in scope, and again, we can't do a bond for any of those expenses, any expenses that may come out of that. We want to be the best school district, period, in Texas and the nation, or whatever. It's not going to be cheap. And so I'd prefer to have that flexibility in our resources and that general fund that we can apply to, you know, pretty much anything we feel that drives us in the direction that we're going to. And again, we can't do bond elections or anything else like that to raise money for those things. And so is there a way that we could loan money to this project and then do a bond and repay it back?
No.
I mean, is something like that we could do?
We cannot do that. And one thing I will point out, if you look at the top column which says "General Fund, Available Funds," that $57.8 million, that's the surplus. That's after the fund balance reserves, and that's after two months of operating expense.
That's all after that, okay.
Yeah, that's after all of that, and so you still have $57 million beyond two months of reserves, beyond our restricted funds. So then even after building one new elementary school, we would still have surplus of $33.5 million even beyond the two months of operating expense.
Fair enough. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, President Barron. Mr. Pompa, I agree with you, and I think we have to walk that line of, we need to use some of our general fund for this, but I also have your same concerns. I think that number you're really worried about, that's $23,600,000 for that east of 360 elementary. And Ms. Powell, at any time, a board can recommit funds to certain funds, correct?
Yes.
So at the time, if we do need to change or stop process, because we're making some assumptions, a bond will pass.
That is correct.
And bonds have failed before. I think a Bowie High School, the plant program decided the bond program was going to fail in the past. So I think we have to be careful in making assumptions. We also have to be careful of committing future boards of what will be occurring in this. I think it is a plan going forward. Hey, here's what we're looking to do. At any given time, I think the board can, our group as a whole can say, hey, let's make a 180 and go this way, this route of where we're going. But it is a, I kind of consider this a little bit, let's commit to let our architects start the work, start the process that we know needs to be done one way or the other, and then as we get to those points, we can make final determinations of then how we allocate, and if we need to change where we need to change.
And you're absolutely correct. And I will also point out that, you know, the column that says "Future Bond Election," by voting on a plan tonight, that does nothing to order an election or suggest a particular date for an election. This is just a possible plan for how we could come up with resources to fund all of these needs in a timeline.
President Barron, I move for approval. Call for the vote.
Please vote. Seven oh, let's build a school. Thank you, Mrs. Powell. What? Let's maybe, all right, let's maybe build a school. Let's plan to build a school. Next item on the agenda is to consider the adoption of parameters for the 13-14 budget. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Barron. Last board meeting, we presented the parameters, and we had some revisions to that, and this evening we bring it forward for adoption. Ms. Powell, do you want to present the budget parameters?
Not really.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, we discussed possible budget parameters for building the 13-14 budget, and we discussed some very minor changes to this from last year. So you have before you the version that the board expressed support for at the last meeting. Very quickly, take you through them. The parameters would include that the budget would align with our strategic plan. And item number two, this kind of speaks back to what Mr. Pompa was talking about just a moment ago, the board would seek to maintain an unassigned fund balance of two months of operating expense, and so I think, you know, what we're doing this evening will do that. Then the board, number three, recognizes its responsibility to adopt a balanced budget, but does recognize that some limited use of fund balance may be appropriate for nonrecurring expenditures or to sustain programs. Then number four, the budget development process will be transparent, include community input. That is something that this district has always been very proud of. And then that we, any proposed budget reductions or revenue enhancement opportunities and cost savings options that are presented by the public would be considered within the context of their impact on students and taxpayers in the community. And number five, if projected expenditures exceed our anticipated revenues, then this board and administration would seek to make budget reductions with, have the least impact on classroom instruction. And number six, resources will target programming that supports achievement growth for all schools, and supplemental resources will be allocated for schools that face specific additional needs. And number seven, the board does seek to provide competitive compensation in an effort to recruit and retain a qualified workforce. And number eight, staffing ratios will meet or exceed state standards, and will be approved by the board before the staffing process begins. And lastly, number nine, administration will present to the board budget forecasts for a minimum of three years as we go through this process.
Are there any questions on the budget parameters?
Motion to approve the budget parameters as presented?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sullins, second by Mr. Hibbs to approve the budget parameters as presented. Please vote. The motion passes 6-0. Mrs. Peña had to step out for a moment.
You can read FFC.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
We did have one announcement we wanted to make that kind of dovetails with this that I think Mr. Pompa wanted to make.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was up to bat. The next step in the 2013-2014 budget preparation process is for the board to appoint the Financial Futures Committee and approve a charge to the committee. Each year, the FFC provides the board with valuable input from the community regarding the proposed budget. An application for the FFC membership will be posted on the district's website beginning tomorrow, December 14 through January 11. The committee will meet approximately seven times from January 29 through April 2, and will report its recommendations to the board on April 18. The draft meeting schedule and draft charge to the committee will be posted on the website with the application. Individuals interested in participating on the FFC should submit their application online. The board will review the applications and plans to appoint individuals to the FFC at the January 17 board meeting. So we will honor the 11, January 11 deadline. Last year, we had a lot of interest in this committee. We had over 50 people interested in the committee, and we had 25 on the committee, I believe.
That's correct.
So I encourage our citizens, our residents in Arlington, to get involved. This is about as deeply involved as you can get without actually having to run an election and get elected to the school board. It's a very impactful committee, so I encourage our residents to please get involved. Thank you.
And we want people from all over the district.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Powell.
The final action item is the, consider the legislative agenda. Dr. Rice?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, President Barron. Do we have a clicker? He'll do it? Okay. He'll have to keep up with me, because I'm going to go pretty fast. I'm not going to read all of this. Essentially, I'm speaking on behalf of our board's Legislative Affairs Committee, myself, Mr. Pompa, and Mr. Hogg, as well as Dr. Cavassos has been an integral part of this committee and our legislative team. The agenda you have before you is essentially the same, except for some very minor changes in words, just grammatical more than anything. No substantive change from the last time this full board has seen this in the work session, when we had David Anderson from Hillco with us going through all of these things and developing this together. So because of that, I'm not going to go through in great detail. For full transparency's sake, anybody watching, know that this will be on our website, assuming it is approved here in a little bit immediately. If not, it'll be tomorrow, so it'll be out there for everybody to see. The other thing that I'd like everybody to know on this board, as well as those watching, one of the things that we're going to do is, our agenda is very detailed, very complex, and we are going to have both summary points, overarching summaries of each of our five legislative priorities that we don't have yet developed, but they will be placed as well on the website. And then we will also, under specific bullet points, we will have the whys, the rationales as to the different positions that we're taking, so that we have as much information out there to the general public and to our legislature as possible. So without further ado, I'll go through our, we have five initiatives in our legislative agenda. The first one addresses accountability and assessment. If you can skip down to the third slide, that's one back, please. Specifically, to make a general statement, our position on accountability in assessment is that a one-size-fits-all accountability system is not an accurate reflection of achieving. is that a one-size-fits-all accountability system is not an accurate reflection of achievement of progress. And districts and campuses shouldn't be held accountable for minor changes in specific subpopulations. What we're trying to address in our legislative action items are things that will have the legislature thinking maybe accountability and assessment are two different pots. Maybe there's some overlap, but they can't all be one in the same synonymous terms. We, moving on to the next slide, want to expand on the final sentence there. College and career-ready education does not depend exclusively on student testing, testing and assessment each year. There's a lot more, obviously, that goes into this. And we, we have specific bullet points underneath each of these items that explain why we say that and, and what the rationale is. So we're really, the point of our legislative agenda is, is to protect what we have and teach the legislature and hopefully move the legislature in the direction of what we feel as a board, as a district, is the right way to go for proper legislation that really has student achievement at, at its heart and soul. And there's several things that we think are short on that right now at the state level. Moving on to the next slide, we, we are very interested in trying to have a simplified reporting process and something that is aligned, that aligns our state and our federal accountability requirements. That's absolutely needed. AYP versus graduation rates, et cetera. Our, there's a complete disconnect state and federally, and we're going to push to try to align those two. So we can skip down through the rest of the accountability and assessment onto school finance unless Dr. Cavassos has any specific issues that you think we really need to put out there. But it's all in, it's all in the document. School finance, I won't spend a lot of time on. We, we firmly believe that nothing's going to happen regarding overall school finance in this session. It will be a special session item after the courts decide what's going to happen. So we're, we're not advocating a lot regarding the funding formulas or anything like that. We do feel we need adequate and equitable funding. And there's obviously myriad of lawsuits that are going through the judicial process right now. So we'll see where that goes. There are other specifics, though, in our bullet points under school finance that we're hoping to move, move the ball a little bit in our favor. If you can move down to, let's see, next slide, next slide, please. One example, the bottom bullet there, reverse the foundation school program payment delay authorized by the last legislature. Reverse that to have us a little bit more solvent. Next slide, please. Reemploy the Student Success Initiative Grants. Those are very beneficial, have demonstrated great yield of gain for us in our district regarding achievement. The bottom bullet there, Fund Career and Higher Ed Exploration Courses for All Eighth Grade Students. That's a specific thing for our district with our strategic plan. We want every child to have a, a, a higher education, a career, a, what's our? C T H E, Career Technical Higher Ed Plan. I think I'm the one that came up with that. I forgot that. Anyway, having this type of funding would really help us to solidify that, that program, which is in our strategic plan. We're going forth anyway, but hopefully, we can get the legislature to understand that because they have a lot of focus on career tech things, but we have to make them understand. College-ready, career-ready, we're all looking for career-ready overall, whether it's after college or right out of high school. And so that's going to help our, our student base. Next slide, please. The top bullet, or the only bullet on that slide, increase state funding for transportation with an adjustment factor for inflation. This is something that hasn't been changed for over 20, 20 years as an example. So you look at the inequity there. The allotment estimated going forward is 3.1 million while our actual costs are 10.2 million. And that's the allotment. That's how, how upside down we are on things. I won't go into any more detail on, on school finance. Let's see. Under the graduation requirements, oh, I will say, though, regarding finance, that we do have a list that will also be provided of quantifying the unfunded mandates, what they are, what those dollar amounts are. And we'll have that readily available for us, for our legislature. Right. But I'm saying is, we'll have that, that, what Ms. Peña said is that we already have that in our packet. That, that's something else that will be on the website with the summation points and that type of thing. Let's see. The graduation requirements, I won't go into this in detail. The, the bottom line here is that we want to support legislation that reflects the entire continuum of education, pre-K through 20. And it specifically affects us, as an example, our high school graduation requirements and our current college admission requirements and the needs of Texas employers are completely different. And we, we have to educate our legislature and we have to come up with legislation and help come up with legislation that will change that to align those two. That will greatly help what colleges are needing so that our kids can get into college, that we have less remediation rates once they get out of here into college, et cetera, et cetera. So we're, we're really focused on, on pre-K through 20. Let's see, moving on to pre-K, we, yeah, next slide, it'll say pre-K. Keep going. There you go. Under pre-kindergarten, this is the, I don't know if this is the overall bullet point. It's a summation. Essentially, regarding pre-K, we are very much committed to the pre-K early start grant initiative to have that brought back. That was one of the things that was cut in this last session. And our approach is to highlight innovations in our district as much as possible in this agenda. And this is a perfect example of where we have used that grant money to fund a public-private partnership with our daycare centers. We have at least 10 to 14 teachers that are out in our private sector daycare centers now, working with children that will be coming to our district. So there's, there's data that we are tracking that will show the, the improvement, the achievement gain. So when they get here, if they get here at a higher level, guess what? It's going to be a lot easier field to sow, road to sow, so to speak. We want to highlight those types of initiatives. We made the conscious decision as a board to continue on with that program even though the funding was cut. It is maybe sustainable with us taking the hit, but we don't have any ability to expand it. So if we can get the legislature to reverse this, this would be very helpful. And the way, we feel, is to put it in our agenda and educate them on this is a public-private partnership, give us some local control, and this is how innovation occurs. And we can create efficiencies and achievement in our state. So that's, that's all I'll say about pre-K. And the final point on school choice, in a nutshell, we want to address and educate the legislature that we are, in fact, a choice district here. We are going to urge the legislature to support legislation and to seek study on different examples of innovations in choice in this state that already occur, such as what we have in Arlington ISD, so that they understand the, and the full complexity and comprehensiveness is what currently is offered before they make any drastic moves on whatever it may be, whether it's vouchers, charter caps. Let's see, vouchers, charter caps, and other choice issues. Something's escaping me there. The other underlying point for us is to ensure that there are no public dollars spent without accountability attached. We, we have that accountability standard for public dollars. There's many programs that do in other industries in our state. And we just want to make sure if there's any type of a, a choice program that is fully vetted, fully evaluated first, and that it's clearly understood that, at least in Arlington ISD, we're not going to support the use of public funds towards any education without some type of accountability or string attached, if you will. And the final thing regarding choice is that we really want to advocate for our ability to innovate and want to have legislation that results in greater flexibility for us as a local board, for other local boards, in our ability to establish charters. Because I think there is a, a direction there that, that we're interested in going. So that's, that's the summation. There's a whole lot more detail in this. I will stop there, entertain any questions. And seeing this is coming from the committee, I don't believe there needs to be, I'm making the motion on behalf of the committee.
Thank you. Ms. Peña.
You talked about this being put out on our website so that everybody knows the direction we want to go. But one of the things we did in the last legislative session was Spence and I think Cindy Powell developed a little presentation. It was Finance 101. And other school districts kind of stole it from us to use as well. I think it would be an opportunity to place it back on our website so that it's out there and people can see where the pennies and all that goes for our district.
I think that's a great idea.
And I thought of that when you talked about school finance, that it'd be a good way to educate the public and ourselves for a review.
I, I think that's great. And I think, I don't know how staff will actually address this and put it on, on the website, but having a, a finance and legislative section might be.
They had this little button.
Right.
It's got this big.
Right.
And it said, School Finance 101. And you just clicked on it and it, it gave this really awesome.
Uh huh. I remember.
Basic information style that anybody should be able to understand.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And thank you to the committee. And I understand your motion is to accept the legislative agenda as published.
That is correct.
Thank you. Please vote. All seven voting in the affirmative. We have a legislative agenda. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the discussion action. I am RFQ for Facility Assessment Services. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, we'd like to present the RFQ results for our Facility Assessment Services. As part of our strategic plan, this is a critical component of our strategic plan, is to have a facilities assessment. And it's important to note at this point because it, it, it will become an integral part of the work that we do moving forward with our strategic plan, that as we develop our instructional model, as we go through a curriculum audit, and as we go through a facility assessment, those are really the, the main ingredients for the big changes in, in AISD in terms of improving our school system. And each of those will inform the work of the other. And that's the complexity of it as we do it all simultaneously. So at this time, I'd like to ask Cindy Powell to introduce our facility assessment.
Yes, okay. Thank you, President Barron, board members, Dr. Cavassos. Let me tell you a little bit about our process here. We did issue an RFQ for facility assessment. There was a team of, I think there were seven of us that interviewed these firms. We received five submissions and we, we interviewed all the firms on one day. And a very interesting process. And we evaluated the submissions and then the information presented in the interviews and, and references. And so we are bringing forward for the board's consideration, the firm of Jacobs, to, to conduct our facility assessment. It's Jacobs Project Management Company. And so with us this evening, we have several individuals who visited with us during the, the interview process. Actually, I think there are two here. And one is Sam Wilson and then Casey Morris. And so I believe Mr. Wilson is going to make a presentation about their experience and their services, and then I'm going to follow with a little more information.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Wilson.
I'm going to just cut to the chase. I know it's getting late. My name is Sam Wilson and I'm with Jacobs. I'm the National K-12 Operations Leader. So I help to structure and manage K-12 assessment and capital planning projects all over the nation. This is just a map that, that we really do have an enormous portfolio of work in this area. As you are probably aware, there's about 98,000 public schools in this country and we've been exposed in this level of planning in one in 10 of them. So we have a real broad base of best practices nationwide that we can bring. And our experience as a team is, is really a focus on K-12 work. So while Jacobs is a large program management engineering company, it's a publicly traded company, about 60,000 employees. The group that Casey Morris and I operate in, we specialize in really nothing but K-12 type facilities. So it's a, it's a very core piece of our business. We do have a lot of local expertise. Our group is headquartered here in Fort Worth. And I live in Montgomery, Texas, and we have offices in San Antonio. And those three offices really make the core of our, our national practice. So we do think we have a lot to bring, not only from a national perspective, but also in Texas. And, and part of that is that we're leaders in, in 21st century education. It's very encouraging to see the discussion on your legislative agenda and, and your curriculum audit and some of the things that you're doing because they really are an integral part. And we've got a, a great deal of experience in, in 21st century learning. We've got tools and techniques that we use to not only do facilities condition assessments, but also the educational adequacy component of that. We're big believers in community engagement. And I noticed that was one of your bullet points as well, is some pride in community engagement. So we know that's critical for community support and, and bonds. And we do have a process for doing a comprehensive detailed assessment that'll leave the district with tools and techniques to manage the portfolio on an ongoing basis. So with that, I'm going to ask Casey Morris, who runs our, our assessment practice, and he'll be the project manager on the job. He's going to walk you quickly through our team and tell you a little bit about the schedule.
Thank you, Sam. What we have up now is a, an org chart that shows who, who the personnel are, who's going to be involved. Sam and I, of course, Nina Woolman is quality assurance and quality manager. She's located in our Fort Worth office. She's not here with us. But you see a breakout of the professionals that we plan to bring to the project. Moving on to that, I want to talk a little bit about the scope and the process. It's, it's, it's a complicated effort. It's not a five-step process to get from the beginning of the plan to the end of the plan. It's a very complicated thing with lots of components, kind of this spider web graphic that you see here, that information feeding into separate components that feed into other components. I didn't want to jump ahead too fast. Moving from left to right, we're going to, we're going to gather data from the district, whether it's drawings and lists of schools and principal contact information. We're going to go and collect information in the field regarding the condition of facilities, when things are going to expire, that sort of thing. We'll move from all of that into a planning phase where we start to develop and analyze data, determine capacities, try to forecast renewals on major components and systems and buildings. And from that, we'll start to develop options. What are we going to do with these buildings? Are we going to renovate that building? Should it be replaced? What priority do those fall in? So we've got a real structured process for moving through this, which incorporates community involvement from start to finish. So we believe in bringing those stakeholders in and getting their, their input from the start and using that through the finish. This is a quick look at the schedule that we're proposing. This has a December start date. We're going to, we're going to do well to hit that if we hit it at all, but let's, let's pretend for argument's sake that that's what happened. We begin sometime in December with a kickoff, a plan for planning, a data gathering exercise. We're going to work to take the district's CAD drawings and bring those into our software so that we can get an accurate space inventory of the facilities within AISD. We'll conduct, conduct educational adequacy assessments from January through March. From there, the building condition assessments will follow where the architects and engineers will go and look at the buildings into July. We, we propose planning, doing the capital plan and developing all of these options and that sort of thing from August, October, and wrapping this thing up in November with software training, a handoff of the software and reporting for district staff. We'll talk briefly about this educational adequacy process. I think, I think it's pretty clear what a condition assessment is. The architects and engineers go into the facilities and determine what needs to be replaced, what's broken, what's at the end of its life. This educational adequacy thing is, is a key component to this that is sometimes overlooked. It's kind of focusing on what's missing in the learning environment. It, it's, it's main focus is on the classroom. Its main focus is on the classroom. We look at several categories and several components of things within the classrooms, inventorying those items. This is a process that we pioneered 15 years ago and have continued to refine over that time. So we've got a really well-developed process that fits today's schools, where we can go in and compare the schools against standards, determine where the adequacy pitfalls are, and get equity across the district. Here are some of the eight categories that we use to classify and rank based on educational adequacy. I don't want to touch on all of them. Capacity, of course, is a big concern. Do we have enough room in the classrooms and in the schools to house the students? Is the cafeteria and the core spaces, are they large enough to house the students? Support for programs. Do elementary schools have a separate music and a separate art classroom? Those are things that we want to look at and analyze based on standards. Environment supports learning. Can you dim the lights for use of today's technology with the projectors and that sort of thing? So these are the eight categories where we take a really in-depth look at the facilities and determine adequacy. This graphic here shows you a little bit about what the whole planning piece is, the capital plan development and that sort of thing. Across the bottom there, we show a steering committee. That's that community involvement, district involvement, that we want to incorporate from start to finish. We start Plan for Planning. We work through data collection, involve the community in a community dialogue aspect, incorporate those standards and those things that we've determined as part of the educational adequacy assessment. Again, develop options. Are we going to build a new school? Are we going to renovate a school, add an addition, that sort of thing? And lastly, we get to a final report, something that's defensible, transparent, and will support the mission of the school district. With that, we can open the floor for questions.
Mrs. Pena?
On one of the slides, you showed surveys performed with handheld computers. You're going to compare against standards. What standards are you going to use?
We bring forth standards that we've developed through working with hundreds of districts across the country. And then we sit down with the community or the principals and the other stakeholders and refine these standards to fit what AISD wants to do. Do you want dedicated music and art spaces? How much teacher storage? It gets to a very minute level of detail in classrooms and spaces, and what programs are we going to support? Kind of develop that educational framework and those standards that we go out and then compare the schools to, to help rank and score them.
To what level? I guess my question is, if you've reviewed our strategic plan, we don't want to measure ourselves just against our surrounding school districts, nor just against the state of Texas. We want ours to be global. We want our students, the level to be at a global level so that we become a premier school district.
We'll incorporate where we've done the same exercise with other districts, and again, through working with you and with your community, determine what that model's going to look like, what that framework's going to look like.
Okay. Because it's pretty well-defined in our strategic plan, and we just did it. So we're real gung ho about making it happen.
Okay. Dr. Reich?
Thank you, President Barron. Thank you for the expedited presentation. I actually had the same question regarding standards. Can you expand on that a little bit further? Our goal with this facilities assessment to match our strategic plan is to somewhat define and achieve world-class facilities. World-class tied to the most optimum, highest level of student achievement attainable. So in your comparisons, your benchmarks that you use nationally or globally that you've done, as far as your, historically, what, how do you take that into account? Do you look at high-performing districts? Do you look at the data that supports a certain educational concept equated to highest achievement? Can you give us some more detail there, please?
Yeah. You know, what we have is a template that we've developed over literally 1,000 school districts. And so we start with that position. And that has a very detailed level of information about each classroom type, the types of, you know, projectors, the kinds of spaces. And then what we generally do is we propose that we form a committee within your school district that's made up of principals and teachers and department leaders and the special ed and athletics. And then we go through that, so that we really can tailor that to your strategic plan and the kinds of standards that you want to deploy. You know, right now, across the nation, we're dealing with a transitionary period where a lot of school districts are starting to look at true 21st century schools and education. And that's quite a bit different. That is moving away from a sage on a stage where you have a teacher-centric classroom with one to 25 kids. That's a big transition. So that's something that I think would be right on the forefront, and we have the most experience in that. We just finished a project with the Department of Defense Education activity where they're doing truly 21st century schools in 100 new schools around the world. So it's a very significant program, and we really have a pretty fundamental basis of that. So that's one of the things we'd like to explore with you, is to what degree would you want to adopt that in being a model world-class school district? And then how would that affect your facilities? At the end of the day, your teaching pedagogy has to reflect how you want to deliver instruction. Our job is to make sure the facilities support that. So we do have a process that we typically use. We'll tailor that process to fit your district. And at the end of the day, we want to make sure that you have standards that reflect what your objectives are, and then we'll go measure against them. And that's one of the hallmarks of our approach, is we do call it a standards-based educational adequacy assessment, in that once we set the standards that you want, we go out and inventory the classroom. And that's a very, very finite inventory. We're not just going and saying, well, this room gets a six. You know, we collect about 100 data elements in each classroom so that we can measure against that. Therefore, it's very objective and has an output that says that each of these schools are equitable across the district. If this is what you want in every school, then this is what you have to do in finite standards to achieve that in each school.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does, for the most part. I was curious, globally, is there, with all the experience that you have nationally, is there any items that immediately stick out to you that are blatant disparities in our U.S. educational districts and walls, if you will, compared to what somebody else is doing in a different country, that you see and from the achievement data that's correlated to it, that, man, this is what we need more of in the United States?
Unfortunately, there's very little correlation of the impact of facilities on learning. So people believe, and I think there have been actually some studies of late that are starting to show that natural light has a positive impact. So, okay, that's pretty easy. Once you get beyond kind of the basics, though, of good lighting, a nice environment, a secure environment, a controlled environment, now there's so many other factors between how kids are taught, what's the pedagogy, what's the school. You know, if you look at KIP Academy, if you look at all these different kind of models, no one has been able really to finitely say, if you do this facility, these kids will learn, because there's so many other aspects.
Sure.
So I think that the way I'd probably answer your question is that the trend in really 21st century schools is a differentiated model, where, and I noticed one of your goals was that we're not going to have accessibility and accountability that one size fits all. Well, the curriculum is moving in that same direction, so that each student has a truly differentiated lesson plan. So that starts to suggest different kinds of facilities. That's different modalities for teaching. That's real-time learning. That's project-based learning. You know, it's multi-disciplinary. It's blending. So there's a lot of different facilities implications about how you put a school, the physical environment in place, to respond to that kind of a pedagogy. Now, are you ready to bite that off? Maybe, maybe not. You know, the Department of Defense is, and they're doing it in a big way, they're also going through a pretty mammoth effort to provide professional development to their instructional base, because they have about 85,000 students across the globe to reflect that. So it's not just get the facilities in place and they'll learn. So it is sort of a very intricate web of how you make those things work together. But I think that's the way I would answer that.
Will you be able to give us, I guess, options, if you will? It sounds like the DOD model you're talking about, the way you're describing it makes it sound like it's a Cadillac up there, and it's going to be pretty cost-intensive. Will you be able to provide us different levels that, you know, here's Cadillac, here's mid-tier, here's maybe not what you want, but here's what the dollar associated with it might be? Or is that not part of the...
Certainly. You know, part of our assessment is to attach line item cost estimates to each of the deficiencies, and that's part of what the software that we use to do this helps to do. So yes, costs are definitely associated, as are facility options. That's when Casey showed sort of at the end. There was a period there where we sit down, and what we typically do for a district like this is take a week and put, you know, your key staff and cabinet members, and go school by school and say, you know, here's what we can do here. The cost is not all, while I would consider the DOD model a pretty much of a Cadillac, there was a lot of really influential thought leaders involved in putting that program together. It's not necessarily more expensive. And, you know, one of the things that we learned in DOD is that in these 21st century schools, you can actually reduce the footprint. So from a capital cost, they may be less expensive. There's differences in furniture and technology, and so, you know, those may outweigh some of that. But it's not necessarily more expensive to do it in a 21st century model.
Okay. And the final question that I have is related to cost of our contract. When you price services out for clients, specifically with us included, are you looking at a mere per square foot student body population? Can you, what do you use for kind of a formula, I guess?
In each of our contracts, we start with a scope of work, and the district's provided a scope of work that we then built a man-hour estimate from. So we projected the amount of labor and the individuals that are specifically involved over time for the next 11 months, and then we convert that to a lump sum. So you have a fixed fee that, this fee, you know, unless we had a major scope change that you merged with another district, and we want to go look at another 10 schools, or, you know, a major scope change, that's the fee that we'll live with. And that's a completely inclusive fee, including all project expenses and so forth. And generally, that comes out, while we don't ever price it on this basis, that usually you are able to reduce that to a cost per square foot. And so we did give your staff comparables of fees that we've done with all sorts of districts, both in Texas and nationally, to, you know, demonstrate that the fee is within that range of what, you know, other districts experience.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Papa?
Thank you, President Barron. I'll pick up on that line on the fee. I guess we had some idea from staff in terms of how much this project would cost. And, you know, when we saw the actual cost, it was substantially higher than what we had expected. The only reason we're talking about this is because we want to make sure that every single facility in Arlington ISD is considered a world-class facility. So that was our goal. And then we started moving back from there. Well, how do we know what we have? We have to know what we have today. And so that's the first part. The next part was going to be establish or define what world-class means. I don't know that there's a global definition. You kind of know it when you see it. We have some good examples of that here in our community. You walk into Cowboy Stadium here in Arlington, and you know that you're in a world-class facility. What is it about it? Again, it's hard to define, but we're going to have to do that here. And then the third part, as we had kind of saw it in our planning, was to figure out, okay, well, here's where we are. This is where we want to be in terms of world-class. What is a deficiency? What are those things that we have to do to get there? And so what I'm hearing from you, and I think I'm hearing from you, that that's really all included in this scope of work. You're going to help us define what world-class is, and you, it sounds like you have a lot of experience and expertise in that, but you're going to take our community input to allow us to define what that is. And then you're going to give us the kind of gap analysis of, this is where you are, this is where you want to be, and this is what it's going to take, including a cost estimate on what it's going to be to get there? Is this right?
Yeah. That's perfectly accurate. So we will do a complete condition assessment with architects, professional architects and engineers. So we'll look at the condition, as Casey described. We'll also look at the educational adequacy, which is really what gets more involved with the world-class facilities. I mean, the...
And you are talking about classrooms and schools, but we're talking about every single facility. This one included.
Administrative space.
Every facility that we have, across educational, sports, fine arts, everything is what we're looking for. And so you're saying that it's all in there.
It's all in.
Well, Dr. Cabasos, I, you know, I guess that hadn't been clear to me, but this is really even kind of expediting and really single sourcing what we thought was going to be a three-part project.
Absolutely. And I think what's important to note also is that the instructional model development, which is key to some of the adequacy, educational adequacy that he's speaking of, is part of the work that's going to be done coming up here in the spring. Our curriculum audit is going to inform that work. Instructional model is going to inform the work that they do. So we have to make sure we keep those things connected, so that we don't end up with a facility assessment on one hand, a curriculum audit here, and an instructional model saying something else. So we've had conversation with the curriculum audit contacts that we have about this process, about that we want the educational facility assessment, that we are developing an instructional model, and the curriculum audit, to make sure that they're aligned, and that we don't end up with three isolated kind of reports that they inform each other. And so we're, those are the conversations we're having.
And one of the things I might just suggest there is that when you get to that stage, we could come talk, you know, and make a presentation to that body of what we're seeing as 21st century schools, and, you know, really what we would think is world-class facilities and trends in educational facility planning across the country, so...
Well, you know, I mean, including all that, facilitating, simplifying it, and then putting it all into basically about a 12-month timeline, which I think when we talked about this, we thought this was going to be, including all three phases of it, it was going to take a little bit longer, probably, you know. We were thinking just assessment was going to take about a year. So I'm all in for that. It's great. Thank you. Great job, staff. Appreciate it.
Thank you, President Barron. Mr. Papa, I agree. I think this is the gold edition of assessment, more than we even thought, because when I first saw the prize, I thought, so I thought, does it come in gold? What occurs? But I can buy in more. One thing Mr. Papa just touched on, and it was one of the questions I wanted to ask. It covers all assessments, all areas outside, so even our bus barns, our areas of that nature. One thing we always hear about that, I think sometimes it gets overlooked, you know, staff parking lots, do we have proper areas on that? That's all included in this, correct also. Mr. Carlisle and Ms. Powell, once we do this, and then, you know, as we start seeing needs for items to go down a bond election, and hearing that we're going to have the assessments and the cost of what that's going to need, we usually spend money before we do a bond election. Do you think that money is going to be covered in this? And we're not going to need the need of some of those architecture firms to pre-price some things before we do a bond election?
Yes. This will be our tool.
Okay.
And the data they're going to produce for us, the database that they have, we'll be able to model different models, if you get what I'm saying. You know, the big picture, you know, where we might need to pare it down. So we'll be able to come up with a plan that we can present to a bond advisory committee.
In the past, we've hired architecture firms...
Right.
...to give us...
No, it's done.
...cost estimates. That will all be included in this.
It's done, yes.
So that $200,000, I think we spent in the past, in the last bond election, will be included with this.
That's correct.
So while we're looking at costs, I think that's an area to think about, where we're pulling some off, because I know this is more than most of us expected, but that's something to look at. Let me ask you guys one last final question. Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. You've done this all over the country. Obviously, I think you guys are the leader in the market in this. Jacobs has a great reputation. What results have you seen come from districts that have done this type of assessment? What do you usually seek right after, maybe a one-year and a five-year plan afterwards? After the assessment is completed?
Well, you know, Houston might be a really good example, that we started our first assessment. In fact, Casey and I built our firm off of that assessment in 1997 for Dr. Rod Page. And in that case, they had just failed a bond the year prior for $395 million. And Dr. Page said, we're not going to have any, pardon me, board meddling. We're going to have a, you know, professional outside assessment. They're going to come in, they're going to study the schools, they're going to rank-order those, and that's what we're going to do. So we did that assessment, and at the end of that, we actually recommended a $698 million bond, so it was twice the one that had failed. But we did it with an extremely objective approach, and it was actually driven by the John Sharp Report. And that led to passage overwhelmingly of their $698 million bond. And that led to passage of overwhelmingly of their $698 million bond. We did that again in 2002. That led to an $805 million bond that passed also. We did that again in 2006 and '07, which led to yet a $1.045 billion bond. And as I'm sure you're aware, they just passed the fourth bond for $1.9 billion. So, at the end of this next bond, they will have put in place over $4.5 billion for the construction, all based on solid assessment, solid planning, you know, each year, year in, year out. So, I mean, I'm not sure if that really answers the question or answer, but...
I think, I think it brings the value of this and if you can keep Houston from meddling, that's a miracle.
We were a little less than successful this last time, but it's still gone through.
If anyone can keep their trustees from meddling too much down there in Houston. But, I will give Houston credit. They are very innovative on new ideas, new programs they're implementing. So, that is a great sign. So, I thank you for your presentation. It was very well received.
And these kinds of deals, when you get all done, there's really two things that matter. You have to have good student outcomes and you have to have public confidence and trust. If you don't have those two things, you know, you're not going to be re-elected, your kids aren't going to get careers, you know, and that's a problem. So, that's what we really want to do, is get facilities that support that and help you deliver good education.
Mrs. Solins?
Thank you. And thank you for a great presentation. I'm really eager to get started with this. We've been talking about this for a long time and I'm, I believe that it's the foundation for some major changes for our students and district. I do have one clarifying question. We talked about this back in the strategic plan days. We talked about how all of this data would come together and form something of a longer-term data play, database planning tool. And we talked this evening about something in the short term here for maybe a potential next bond election. But, would there be some sort of a dashboard or some sort of a working tool left for...
We've spent the last 10 years developing a tool to help us do our jobs that we then leave behind with the school district. It's a piece of software. It's database, it's database engine in the background. It's just a big robust tool that put in place and with the staff trained and staff committed to maintaining it, can keep this thing, can keep the data set alive. I mean, when we, when we print reports, that data starts to die the second you put it on the shelf. And the idea behind the software is to, just like you mentioned, is to keep the thing alive and keep it going forward. That's all part of the price. It's all included here. The training's included and with staff commitment and district commitment, we can, we can help you keep that thing alive so that three years from now, we get a brand-new snapshot of what's going on within the district.
That's great news, because both we can answer short-term needs, it can stay with us for the long term. It also saves money over the long term because we're not, our staff's not having to spend as much time having to capture all that data for one-shot analysis. We will have that ready to go. So, that's great. Thank you very much.
Sure. Dr. Reich?
Thank you. I just had one more question. On the scope of assessment and services, is there anything that you see from other contracts and clients that we, that are absent here?
On the surface, I don't think so. Once we get involved, there's a couple areas that might occur. One of those would be structural, that generally when we go out and do an assessment on a building, we take an architect, a mechanical engineer, an electrical engineer and look at the building. In 95, 99% of the times, the architect can address any kind of structural issue, especially in this part of the world. We don't have seismic, significant seismic concerns. We don't have five-story schools. We don't have any of that kind of stuff. So, you know, the structural issue, if we were to go to a school where we found, you know, particularly, and this has occurred, I mean, we've had a ceiling collapse on a school right before we started the assessment. So, you know, if we've got to a school and found there's a significant life safety structural risk, then, you know, we might want to take a harder look at that. I don't anticipate that. Roofing is another area that, again, you know, the architects can generally address roofing. We don't know what condition your roofing is. You know, at this stage, again, we really don't know what kind of information you have on roofing. So, if we get in there and decide, you know, gee, we've got some real challenges in roofing, then on some districts, we've brought in a specific roofing consultant. You've got two right here in Fort Worth, both of which we've used, that are both reputable good consultants. So, if we were to need to do that, we could. I don't really anticipate that. So, I think, I think we've got you covered.
Okay. Well, that's good. And regarding roofing, I think you'll find we're in excellent shape. That was part of our '09 bond dollars and we've had a roofing consultant and most, all facilities have had something addressed regarding roofing. So, hopefully, you'll find that satisfactory.
I've actually already heard that. That's why we didn't include it. So, I think you're right.
Good. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hogg?
Never say never what you're going to find, gentlemen. Because this is recorded. I'll call you on that now.
It's okay.
Because we may have a building collapse on you. So, I apologize for that. I hope not also. Wear hard hats. So, sign a big waiver before you walk in. I'd like to make a motion that the board award a contract to Jacobs Project Management Company at the negotiated fee.
Motion by Mr. Hogg, second by Mrs. Solins to award the contract to Jacobs. Further discussion? Please vote. All voting in the affirmative. Congratulations.
Thank you. Willa Forte?
These gentlemen have airplanes to catch.
Not anymore.
Not.
Next item on the agenda is items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Mrs. Powell, please share donations and bids.
President Barron, board members, Dr. Cavassos, there are eight bids on the agenda this evening for your consideration. And then, it's also my privilege to report that our schools have received donations from the following individuals and organizations. South Arlington Property Owners Association, various companies and individuals for the new superintendent reception, APTO Digital, Arlington High School Orchestra Booster Club, the Arlington High School Band Booster Club, Mary Pettigrew, Krispy Kreme Donuts, David's Barbecue, Arlington High School Backstage Booster Club, Chop House Burgers. You see that we're eating a lot tonight. North Texas Orienting Association, Arlington High School Choir Booster Club, Golden Chick, Lamar High School Band Booster Club, Lamar High School Baseball Booster Club, Lamar High School Boys Basketball Booster Club, Eclipse Entertainment, Lamar High School Choir Booster Club, the Martin High School Football Booster Club, Martin High School Boys Soccer Booster Club, DNS Cycle of Arlington, Martin High School Boys Basketball Booster Club, the Martin High School Cheerleading Booster Club, Martin High School Girls Basketball Booster Club, Randy Jordan, the Martin High School Baseball Booster Club, Martin High School Swimming and Diving Booster Club, Rush Creek Baptist Church, Sam Houston High School Band Booster Club, Diana and Brianna Padilla, Word of Truth Family Church, Altrusa International Foundation of Arlington, the Butler Elementary School PTA, Dawn Painter Photography, Big Kahuna Fundraising, Life Touch National Studios, Spring Creek Barbecue, United Realty and Associates, Picture Day, Glamour Craft Studio, Pantigo Lions Foundation, Arlington West Rotary Scholarship Fund, Town North Associates, Stephanie Kasem, Larry Lutz, and Wood Elementary School 6th Grade Parents. So, the donations presented this evening total $90,295, which brings our year-to-date
Thank you, Mrs. Powell, and thank you to our most generous community. Is there a motion to accept the consent?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Peña, second by Dr. Reich, Reich to accept the consent. Motion passes 6-0. Mr. Papa had to step out for a minute. Next is a discussion item on the progress report for Board of Trustees Continuing Education December 13, 2012, progress report for Board of Trustees Continuing Education Credit, January 1, 2012 through December 13, 2012. Pursuant to the Texas Education Code, Section 11.159B, the minutes of the last regular board meeting during the calendar year must reflect the names of those board members who have completed the required continuing education, who have exceeded the required hours, and who are deficient as of the date of the meeting. Therefore, the minutes of this meeting will reflect that each trustee has the following number of training hours at this time. For Tier 1, experienced trustees are required to have Tier 1 update to the Texas Education Code training only after a legislative session. At Tier 2, the following trustees attended the required Tier 2 team-building and assessment training with interim Superintendent Cavassos on November 26, 2012. Peter Barron, 3 hours. Bowie Hogg, 3 hours. Aaron Reich, 3 hours. Jamie Solins, 3 hours. Gloria Peña, 3 hours. John Hibbs, 3 hours. And Tony Papa, 3 hours. Tier 3, the following experienced trustees have exceeded the required 5 hours of Tier 3 Continuing Education Credit. Peter Barron, 73.75. Bowie Hogg, 50.50. Aaron Reich, 73. Jamie Solins, 65 hours. Gloria Peña, 53.25. John Hibbs, 38.25. And Tony Papa, 55.75 hours. Open meetings training. The following trustees have completed the required open meetings training. Peter Barron, Bowie Hogg, Aaron Reich, Jamie Solins, Gloria Peña, John Hibbs, and Tony Tonight, each of you received legislature, excuse me, each of you received literature covering the framework for school board development adopted by the Texas State Board of Education. That was in your packet and I gave it to you. That brings us to the open forum for non-agenda items. There are no cards. Superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, I'd like to share some information about significant events in the district. Last month, the Texas Education Commissioner, Michael Williams, visited our firefighter academy at Sam Houston High School and our students performed exceptionally in their demonstration of their skill. And the commissioner was much impressed with our students. Several board members joined us for that event as well. Swift Elementary recently was named an NFL Play 60 Superschool by Dallas Cowboys. With that, an award of $10,000 in the form of a grant came from the Dallas Cowboys. And that can be used to encourage students for their physical fitness. Cowboys tied in. Jason Witten visited the campus and presented the award. The NFL Network is going to be providing a $10,000 grant to another school, and that was announced that, that day also, another school in Arlington as part of the NFL Play 60 program. We recently had a Coach for Kids drive as a school district, and that's our first school-wide and school-district-wide type of engagement for our kids and donations. Patterson Kia was very generous and donated more than 500 new coats to students. And Joe Johnson, the general manager of Patterson Kia, joined us in an event where some of those coats were distributed at Morton Elementary and the look on those kids' faces was just remarkable. It was very, very touching. Newly-elected U.S. Representative Mark VC visited Carter Junior High School last week to learn more about our Avid program and our Pre-AP program and our AP program. We have an AP and a Pre-AP program at a junior high level, and that is in our Spanish classes. And the students, again, represented the school district extremely well. Mr. Nix did a fine job at hosting all the group and Mr. VC was very impressed. And of course, we took the opportunity to share with U.S. Representative-elect Mark VC the need for more career and technical funding from the federal government and our Carl Perkins funding to be increased. I'd also like to recognize Martin High School Choir Director Kay Owens. She has been selected as a recipient of the 2012 UIL Sponsor of Excellence Award. Kay will receive a $1,000 prize from the UIL and I want to congratulate Kay and all the fine work that she does at Martin High School. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Board members report. Mr. Hibbs?
President Barron, tonight is going to be the last board member meeting that we have without, but we're losing two of our key staff that's going to go off on the horizon and see the sun go down. Mr. Stephen Harvey and Mr. Jimmy Walker.
Why don't you drag him out here so we can take a look at him?
Yeah, why don't you come out here, guys? Yeah. We're going to put, we're going to put up the video of Jimmy right now. We, we have already held a reception to honor them and wishing them the best. They will work through next week. However, I just want to personally say, and I know that the board may want to chime in themselves, you two have been just real pillars for this district. I mean, Stephen, what you've been able to, how you've been able to support this district through the IT and their various capacities that Dr. Cavassos has put you in, especially recently. I just want to say thank you. You're one of those people that would never say no and you just keep on going with a smile on your face, even though we know that with bond committees and many other things, we kept you up very late. If you were being paid by the hour, your fee would be sub a minimum wage. So, you know, I want to appreciate, appreciate your commitment. And, Mr. Walker, there is not an individual that I've ever come across in this district, and you've been in a lot of different capacities, and one of them being the toughest, being a principal. I have never run across an individual that they would say that they've never, or that they've had a disparaging word. Every person that's ever spoken of you has the most utmost respect and appreciation for you. And during my time on this board or even with some committees that I served on before, both of you have just been wonderful. And I want to appreciate, tell you, I appreciate you and wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Mr. Harvey or Mr. Walker, would you like to say something?
Let us go home.
That's what I thought.
All right. Other board member reports. It's a big chance. Gloria's too tired to talk, but apparently, Dr. Reich is not. Go ahead.
Hey, I got here late. I've got at least an hour, hour and a half to go here. I've got to catch up. Yeah. Lights will go out on me. I just wanted to say that beyond participating with several trustees in various events over the past several weeks, I, I had the distinct privilege, first time for me, reading, reading the words for Spelling Bee at Wood Elementary. And I thank Mr. Hogg for that because he had to step out on business for it. So, I volunteered, or maybe that was a strategic play on Mr. Hogg's behalf, I don't know. But, it was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed it. And I've, I've been in the audience as a parent, but I've never been up there next to the judges reading those words. And I tell you, there were a couple of words that I skipped because I thought, I don't know about the pronunciation, even though it's all phonetically spelled out and it's remarkable what these little kiddos do. And I wish them all luck as they go on district and regional, on and on. So, that's all I have.
So, you didn't have to spell anything, did you?
I did, but it was all spelled out for me. So, I just had to read the letters. Thank you.
Mrs. Peña?
I just wanted to end by saying Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy Holidays, since we are now approaching the end of the year and the reason for our holiday vacation. So, Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just mention that I did attend the Christmas rally for our PEP students. Those are our pregnant and parenting students at the North Davis Church of Christ. And we want to thank North Davis Church of Christ for putting that on. They, they put a tremendous amount of effort into it and it's great to see those moms with their babies and children and getting presents from the church. It's great. And I want to thank the Arlington Police Department for Santa Cop at the Convention Center. It's an annual event and... It's an annual event, and same thing there, we brought all those kiddos in, and they were just beaming when they got their Christmas presents from the police department. So thank you to the Arlington Police Department. Do we have anything for notes?
Not that I'm aware of, unless my assistant had anything before I got here.
Yeah, School Finance 101, and we're going to update the website with all the things we talked about tonight.
Yep.
Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night. We're adjourned.[1762.24]